Returning from executive session where we discussed a superintendent search and a student appeal. And I need a motion to open public session. Kristin and a second. Carrie, all those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. We are back in open session. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to start us off with the pledge led by our student representative. Thank you.
My question is, Mr. President of the United States of America, and to you in the honor of your citizens, one nation, one God, indivisible, with the great justice of God.
Thank you. And we begin with our administrator remarks. Shall I start with Kathy? Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to reserve my comments for executive session.
Okay. Okay. Move on over here. Victor?
Good evening. I will reserve the majority of my comments for the board presentation. However, I did want to address the most recent newspaper article about the bathrooms at Brewster High School. And on behalf of the Facilities Department, I wanted to let the community know and the students know what measures have been taken to help correct some of the issues that they cited over at the high school. I embedded a link to the checklist for the bathrooms, which is going to be performed periodically throughout the day, no less than three times throughout the day. We're also extending some of our part-time cleaners to come in a few hours early, which will then free up the time of the day shift folks over at the high school to pay more attention to the bathrooms. So again, on behalf of the Facilities Department, I want to let, you know, the students and the community know that we are taking measures to make sure that we address this issue. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
Good evening. It's okay, I'll reserve all my comments tonight. Thank you. Okay. Just a couple of pieces of information. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Jessica McCann on our counselors, the liaison for the counseling department at the high school for being selected as the 2018 New York State School Counselor of the Year. You should clap for that. Ms. McCain, McCann along with Ms. Hoiler attended a ceremony in DC, which is really phenomenal. And she was a representative from New York State. And again, it's an award that's well deserved. You know Jess, she is so deeply committed to students, student success, as all our counselors are. And it's just befitting that she should receive this award in recognition. I'd like to thank the Brewster High School marching band for being members of the contingent of students who descended upon Disney. And this was organized by Andrea Pradico, Patty Taylor, and Brian Sanishen. Mrs. Hoiler was there. I only heard magnificent things about the students and how they comported themselves and represented Brewster High School. And you all should be very, very proud of that. And I want to thank the educators for organizing this, the performing arts team for making it possible. I'd also like to thank one of our monitors at CB Starr Intermediate School, Ms. Cherry, I'm sorry, La Piccola, who saw the article, the upstate article that referenced the census data and the graduation completion rates of adults living in Brewster Village. She was so upset by the article and his portrayal of our district that she wrote the author and asked the author to include a disclaimer, which indicated that it was census data and it was not data associated with Brewster High School or the district. And I thought that was pretty courageous of her. And I told them, asked her if I could mention it, and she said, you know, it would be fine. So that's really significant. And I just so appreciate her advocacy and her courage in making sure that this portrayal was not viewed as a part of the district. The Brewster Bubbly Bears, as you know, is philanthropic and entrepreneurial venture that's in the, that's part of the Brewster, I'm sorry, part of the career skills program at the high school. They are experiencing tremendous success. And that's thanks to Ms. Sarah Barnes, Ms. Donna Schneider, Ms. Denise Galgano. The students have amassed more clients. They are collaborating with other agencies across not only Putnam County, but also in Danbury. So I want to thank those educators because that's a really important experience for students to have. And they are applying all of the SCP skills in their work to collaborate, to think about what they're doing, to be able to advertise and work well with others. And it's just been a tremendously successful program, and we thank our educators for making it possible, along with Ms. Kennedy, Ms. Asuli, and Mr. Ostalaci. Thank you to Ms. Hoiler and Ms. Archer for continuing to make the Mindful Moment Room a success. I hear that over 600 students have visited the room. With that said, that's enough good news for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, just a few updates from me regarding our superintendent search. We are down to one candidate, and we are in the final stages of the process. So hopefully, the next meeting or thereafter, we'll be able to provide a more detailed update. Secondly, thank you everyone who participated in the request of the board to participate in our mid-year self-evaluation and the survey that went out. Last check, I believe the final involvement of surveys was 198 people participated from throughout the district, the community, and some students. And we will, the board will need to do a retreat to engage in the conversation on the findings of the survey. And then I think at that point, we'll be able to compile the information, and then at that next board meeting, however that works out, we'll be able to present some feedback and next steps that we'll be taking in response to some of the, to the survey and our own evaluation. And also with that retreat, we'll need to do our superintendent's mid-year evaluation as well and that discussion. So we'll need to figure out a date. I'll send out an email to take care of that. And then I have a few more comments, but I can leave them to the end. That's urgent for now. Okay. So now we move on to our student representative.
Good evening. So a few things going on in the Brewster community. This Friday is the Mr. Brewster Spectacular Show, March 1st at 6:30. So come see me and a few of my other friends compete in order to raise money for cystic fibrosis for the Salty Hands Club. Music students had a great time down in Florida, Disney, the marching band performance. And the orchestra, of course, did workshops that they participated in down there. And again, everybody had a great time, the weather was good. The International Dinner Fundraiser is on March 15th, where we raised money for the Italy trip. So we encourage everybody to come out to that. The Blood Drive is March 14th this year. Students are encouraged to come to the Blood Drive because those who have actually donated in the November one and this one on March 14th get towards that graduation to acknowledge that they donated twice. Well, they just have their annual pie day on March 14th, get a 3.14. So, you know, the students at Brewster High School will be eating good pie that day. And then Mamma Mia opens on March 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Tickets are on sale online for 18 dollars, well, online for $18 and $15 for students. The cast and group have been working very hard on this production, and they're excited to put it on for you guys. Tickets are on sale now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we move on to our presentations, recognition, and discussion items. And we start with number one, Mr. Joseph Cristiano, recognition. Ms. Smith.
Mr. Cristiano, Ms. Smith. Just in the way of a little bit of information, Mr. Cristiano, who is one of our silent heroes in the school district, in our bus department, our bus garage and transportation department, who's done some tremendous work that deserves our praise. We're all, you know, obviously, everyone's conscious of how we save money and how we use our inventory and monitor our inventory. And Mr. Cristiano's done something pretty magnificent. And Ms. Smith wrote a letter of thank you and shared it with us. And it was a thank you for something pretty remarkable that Joe did, and we wanted to recognize him. So I want first, Ms. Smith to share what he did, and then we'll present him with a certificate, which is only a token of our appreciation for your dedication to the school district and the children of our district.
And the Oscar codes too? Mr. Joseph Cristiano. Joe is our lead mechanic at the transportation department, and one of his duties is to order the parts for all of the buses. It's a very tedious process. Joe actually researched the ability to change the fuel additive in the buses this year, which turned into a cost savings, but not only a cost savings, but reliability and dependability of the buses. In winter months, we need to put a fuel additive in to make sure the bus starts, the buses need to be plugged in. Joe found an additive that has upgraded the reliability of the service. We have no, no starts this winter so far, and also had saved the district $11,600 over a six-month period. So I want to thank you, Joe, for your dedication and positive impact that you have had on the campus.
So in recognition of, oh, I'll just be a little bit, Joe. Brewster Central School District Certificate of Recognition, Joseph Cristiano, District Auto Mechanic. In recognition of your contribution to the district, for your diligence, care, and concern in recognizing considerable cost savings for the district and the entire Brewster community. On behalf of the Board of Education and the district, as I said, this is a token of appreciation, and I'm so sure that the board would appreciate you coming around and shaking their hands after you shake our hands and take photos. We give Joe a hand.
Thank you.
And we'll have to take another one with the board after you go in the house. So go ahead, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our next presentation. Mr. Jack Duncan and Mrs. Debbie Duncan, Brewster Lions Club Recognition for creating the Oscar Gonzalez Safe Swim Program.
And I think Ms. Edie Flood of Winds Over Water are here here and Brewster Lions. So could you all come on? Ms. Edie Flood and Ms. Kenny Winch. You're an amazing group of people. You are. You saw an opportunity, which arose from a tragedy, it was the death of Oscar Gonzalez. And they both, the Brewster Lions as well as Winds Over Water, decided to create a scholarship in recognition of the fact that there were students who obviously, you know, could benefit from learning how to swim. And they created a scholarship which allowed and made available 10 scholarships for students to actually be at winds on waters and learn to swim. And as I said, it's a rose from a tragedy, and it's a really, you know, amazing way in which we have shown us and shown our students how we take situations that are really, you know, the worst thing that you could imagine, you know, a death of a student and turning it into something where you can save lives in the future. So we thank you for what you've done, and from the bottom of our hearts, we really appreciate it, how you have, you know, made this possible for our students.
Brewster Lions. Brewster Lions. Edie Flood. Go, someone else. I'll go right there. Okay. I'll just read the certificate of recognition as to the Brewster Central School District Certificate of Recognition, Brewster Lions. In recognition of your generosity and selfless dedication to the students of Brewster High School. And we also have the sort of last question. So thank you very much.
On behalf of Brewster Lions, I really should say that all this is due to Debbie, who thought like this, her husband Jack, who created it and worked with Edie from Winds Over Water. And these three people have done such a wonderful thing.
I'll read this. Certificate of Recognition, Jack and Debbie Duncan, in recognition of your generosity and selfless dedication to the students of Brewster.
Thank you. Again, a certificate of recognition to Edie Flood and Winds Over Water School Swimmers in recognition of your generosity and selfless dedication to the students of Brewster Schools.
I just wanted you all to know that this is only the beginning, that the Lions Club and Winds Over Water will be working together for a very long time for the children of Brewster and surrounding areas and giving scholarships to them. Our focus is to have a safe community, and it starts with all of us. All right? So I want to thank them and thank all of you for your contributions, and it will be ongoing. It's not going to end. This is the end, this is just the beginning. So thank you very much.
Trace is not here, she's working, but oh my goodness. Wow. Trace is going to be very happy. That's so special.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I do.
And you get to go around and shake your board.
No. No. Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you. I'm glad. Thank you.
And Ms. Debbie Duncan, if there are donations, if anyone would like to make donations, how would they do that?
Yeah, they could, to the Brewster Lions Club for the Oscar Gonzalez Scholarship denotation, Box 350, Brewster, New York 10509. And I, they can either email me at duckinj1@comcast.net. We also have the brewsterlions@comcast.net. And this is like, if it's going to be ongoing, we've applied for grants through the big Lions Club, they assured us we're going to get some more, and it's going to be a, you know, we're doing crawl walk run, but we're, we actually have four of our students being taught on a 16-week program right now. So not going to work.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Now we move on to our JFK HVAC project budget update, KGND Architects.
Okay, so we're joined this evening by Joe Riley of KGND Architects and Tom Anzalini of Burley Gallagher Engineers. We last presented to the board back in October to discuss the potential of installing HVAC at JFK, and I included in the upload to board docs, an update of that October presentation, which I won't review again, but it's there for reference. And what Joe's going to be presenting tonight is an update of the cost estimate in order to install HVAC at JFK.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you again for having me here. This is a project that was originally conceived a couple of years ago when we were in the midst of remodeling JFK High School and thought that there may be funds to do the work at the end of that project. The funds for JFK were expended on work in JFK that was part of the original program for the school, which included air conditioning, about 40% of the building. This is a project to air condition the balance of the building. And there we are now, we figured we have a 12% escalation from where this estimate was when it was first provided two and a half years ago. So we're estimating that we're at $1.94 million to execute this project at this time. The project was designed, it has been submitted to SEB, and it has building permit. It does need to be put out to bid, and there is a little bit of work to prepare the bid documents, but as I said, the design is in place. And there is work that was put in place to accommodate this installation. During the large project at JFK, we added sockets in the classrooms, we added the large distribution piping for the chilled conditioned water, we added sockets and light fixtures so that we don't have to throw away stuff that we put in before and redo it. So we have made the space for the internal improvements. So that is where we are now. The balance to complete it, as I said, is $1.94 million. And there's a process to go through to buy the work if you should decide to proceed with it.
Is it $1.49 or $1.94?
$1.94. Sorry, did I say?
I don't know if I read wrong.
And being that it's 12% higher than originally thought, with the comment that there is something left, nothing left, as far as the original scope of, you know, work and buy?
So with the capital project bond approved by the voters in 2014, it was never included in that project that HVAC would be installed at JFK. Our hope back in the spring of 2017 was that there would be funds left over that we could incorporate this additional work into the bond. And then the summer of 2017 and 2018 occurred, and, you know, when we were renovating a 50-year-old building, we had a number of change orders, you know, that needed to be taken care of. So we realized that we couldn't afford to do this project under the bond, where we had hoped that we'd been able to do that, you know, two years ago at this time. So currently, the capital project bond is complete, the work is complete, we're in the process of filing the final cost report. So in order to fund this project, it would require a transfer to the capital fund from our savings account, our unreserved fund balance. And it would be a one-time cost, no cost to taxpayers at all, because we're using our savings account to fund this project. But we do receive building aid on it. So we would get building aid over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, depending on what SEB determines the useful life of this project. Our building aid ratio right now, it actually just increased for this year, it's at about 50%. So really, half the cost is recouped in building aid over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, which would affect the net cost to the district of $1 million.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the board, I just want to update the community on this. So this past fall, a number of school districts up in Dutchess County specifically, and also basically throughout the whole Hudson Valley region, experienced mold in some of their school buildings. And Millbrook School District specifically had a very, very costly mold remediation project. And one of the benefits of installing an HVAC system is that it would reduce the potential for mold to develop when you have, you know, unseasonably humid summer like we experienced last year. There were also instances of humidity in the building, and obviously, it's a much better learning environment for our students, and these are, you know, this is our smallest population of kids. So that's really what prompted us to first reach out to KGND, again, two years ago at this time, to consider the possibility of performing this work.
At this point, Victor, is this the only non-air-conditioned school or part of school that we have?
Yeah, and Kenny Winch from our Facilities Department is here, but JFK is the only non-air-conditioned building. Right? Correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to the board?
I have a quick question. So we get 50% building aid back on this. Does that building aid that we get that go back into the unreserved fund balance?
Yes. Well, it comes in each year in our state aid. So in the form of our state aid, part of our state aid is building aid. So we would get this, you know, over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, you know, it's like an amortization schedule, and you receive it over, you know, a period of, you know, 10 to 15 years. So each year, we would get, you know, say $100,000 over the next 10 years.
Okay. So it will be replenished, basically?
Yes. $1 million of it would be replenished through building aid, correct? And then the net, the net cost would be $1 million.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, you know, the next step in this process would be that we would prepare a resolution for the board to accept or propose a proposition, because this needs to go to the voters. This transfer to capital needs to be presented to the voters. So this would take the form of a separate proposition. Our first proposition is a budget vote. Proposition two, we're going to be discussing in a moment, is the fleet replacement plan and bus purchases. And then proposition three would be authorization to transfer the money to the capital fund, $2 million in order to perform this work. So, you know, the first step is for the board to approve a proposition, and then the second step is for the voters to approve the proposition. And if the voters fail to approve the proposition, then the work doesn't get completed.
Victor, if everything were to be approved, I'm sure you mentioned this before, but when would we expect the work to be completed by?
I can ask Joe to answer that question, because again, we actually, we already have a project approval, which is really the longest lag in the process, because SEB has been so, you know, so far behind in approving projects. This project is actually approved. Our challenge is we don't have funding for it. So I'll ask Joe to chime in.
Well, there are other challenges as well. And in the scope of this particular project, the biggest chunk of time, once, once a district has decided to award it and it has been bid, is acquiring the equipment is typically a 10 to 15-week process. And those would be the large machines that go on the roof. So...
Victor, if everything were to be approved, I'm sure you mentioned this before, but when would we expect the work to be completed by?
I can ask Joe to answer that question, because again, we actually, we already have project approval, which is really the longest lag in the process, because SED has been so, you know, so far behind in approving projects. This project is actually approved. Our challenge is we don't have funding for it. So I'll ask Joe to chime in.
Well, there are other challenges as well. And in the scope of this particular project, the biggest chunk of time, once a district has decided to award it and it has been bid, is acquiring the equipment is typically a 10 to 15-week process. And those would be the large machines that go on the roof. So we could dig into it with you, it's possible that we could do the work in the interior of the building during this summer, if we get it out to bid and we're ready to award contracts when the voters approve the expenditure. But it is very unlikely that it will be operational before the school year starts next year. There will still have to be equipment installed on the roof of the building and final connections. So it is not realistic to say that this work can be completed and operational by the end of the summer.
Just a logistical question, are we allowed, do we have to wait, Victor, until this actually gets approved, or are we allowed to do, get any bids ahead of time, sort of while, while the process is playing out? Are we allowed to do that, or is that not allowed?
Joe?
We are, yes, you are allowed, you have, you have SED approval on the project already, so you are allowed to bid it. You're not allowed to award the contracts until the funding is authorized. But we could go through the bid process and be ready to award at the first meeting following the authorization by the voting public.
One more, I understand it can't be finished before the start of the school year, but it's work that can be done while school is in session? I mean, how?
There is work that can be done while school is in session, but there are some logistical challenges. We cannot lift anything onto the building with a crane while the building is occupied. The machines that we're putting on the roof are not enormous machines. The steel, what's called tonnage, that we will put up there, the frame we put up there to hold these machines would happen during the summertime. So it is feasible that the work could be completed in the fall while the school is occupied. We're gonna have to use Saturdays and holidays for actually bringing the equipment up onto the building.
And the good part about the fall is we do have holidays, consecutive holidays, to get this work done while school is out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so before I just mention the next presentation, I just want to say thank you everyone for working through the presentations tonight with us. We do have a few extra, but unfortunately, because our last meeting was canceled, we did have to add some to tonight, but we will get through them. So we now move on to our 2019-20 initial budget presentation and our administrators.
Okay, good evening, and again, as I mentioned, we did miss the board meeting earlier in February, where we would have presented a portion of these budget presentations. So tonight, we're gonna talk about our Proposition Two, which is our fleet replacement plan. We're now entering year six of our fleet replacement plan, and as you'll see in a moment, it's been very successful and has been a tremendous impact on our operations. So I have with quickly, Ms. Mary Smith and Ms. Danielle Wolfbe, and they're gonna be doing the majority of the presentation.
So our fleet replacement plan for 2019-20 school year, this is the age comparison of the fleet that we currently have. We have 107 vehicles in our fleet, and as you can see in the red, we have 16 vehicles that are 16 years and older. We have 40 vehicles that are between 11 and 15 years. What I want to mention is that 18 of those 40 vehicles are between 13 and 15 years old. If you move down to the bottom column, between one and five years young, we have 43 vehicles, which is showing that we're moving in a positive direction, keeping up with our fleet replacement So this would be the projected future bus purchases based on a 10 to 15-year lifecycle. We are currently maintaining a 15-year lifecycle. In doing that, we would be required to purchase seven buses a year. Just to keep you up to date on how we're maintaining this 15-year lifecycle, I guess I'm saying this. How we're maintaining our 15-year lifecycle is by, we keep the vehicles in full service for 13 years, and for additional two years, we take a less aggressive approach, and we use the vehicles as spares to do shuttles around the district, and we keep them local. Are you most gonna go over some of the financial benefits of a fleet replacement plan? Here are some of the financial benefits of, they're predictable in future costs, we know what we're getting, the cost effective, they're, we know we get more for our money, safety, means of budgeting, continuing purchasing the buses yearly, and the persistent state revenue streams is we seek more money, we receive money as we're paying out. Can you change things? Okay. The operational benefits are newer, safer equipment, predictable equipment, which is older buses are obsolete and harder to acquire, reduced repair costs, or less repairs for the more buses, and reduced parts inventory, as you well know, like just as I was online, you get your packages the next day, so are our buses. So all of this is increased service availability. Now, I'm handing it over to Mary. Please. So this is a chart of our disposals and replacements by year. If you go back to 2015, 16, 17, you'll see that maintaining the 70 bus purchases a year, we gained one, lost one, and this year currently, plan, I'm sorry, 18, 19 school year, we're actually in a negative balance right now. Year-to-date, we have five buses that we're pretty sure by June during this year that they will be permanently out of service. But maintaining the replacement plan, one thing we can be sure about is that we will have seven vehicles every year, we're just not sure about how many we'll be disposing So if you're wondering what we do with the buses, the one we dispose of them, what we do right now, currently, we have recouped about between $7,000 and $9,000 in, $7,000 to $9,000 from auction and bid process, and some of our more favorite buses, we give them new rolls in the yard, and we'd like it to be old yellow. And that's what we do with them. It's one of our favorites.
I think that's a 12-foot wide plow that they use. I think it's a 12-foot wide plow that they use to clear the yard, which is pretty impressive and gets a lot of work done. So obviously, you know, having a bus and, you know, clearly it's not, you know, fit for passenger service anymore, but it's still operational, and we're able to stick a 12-foot plow on it, which, you know, really cuts down on the time it takes to clear snow during snowstorms.
And that was, that was actually last week.
Can you get me the next slide, John? There you go. So here's a chart that shows our bus purchase history and projection. So we've been chugging this for the past few years, but it still rings true, because you see here in 01, 02, in a year in which we purchased 23 vehicles, went two years without purchasing any, and then followed up with another couple of years where we purchased 16 and 15 vehicles respectively in 05, 06, and again in 07, 08. And that creates a multimillion-dollar spike in purchases, which would need to be repeated, you know, 15 years later after those buses fall out of service. So what we're trying to avoid is another multimillion-dollar spike in purchases, and we accomplish that by following our fleet replacement plan, which is evidenced by this straight green arrow. So we're trying to build a level, steady equipment to our bus purchases and replacements, that we maintain the fleet age so that they stay young and, you know, evolve throughout their lifecycle at a steady pace, rather than have these violent swings, which would force us to purchase 23 buses or 15 buses in a single year. So the annual cost, we're aided by New York State Transportation Aid, so another one of our state aid components. Our transportation aid ratio is 47.5% of the cost. So essentially, it works out to almost a buy-one-get-one-free deal with building aid. The first five annual payments is due in 2021, so really, two years from now, and this has absolutely no impact or bearing on the 2019-20 budget, which we're gonna be discussing in a moment. The projected annual cost net of state aid is about $90,000. And because we're now in year six of our fleet replacement plan, the purchases that we made in the 14, 15 school year will be paid off by the time these new purchases come onto the books. So the, if you could refer to the long-range financial plans up on our website, we reviewed this back in October, where we talked about building a level and steady commitment to our fleet replacement plan. So the net incremental cost to the average Southeast and Patterson homeowner is just $3 and $2 respectively. And the reason why I presented it as incremental cost is because now the purchases from 14, 15 are now paid off, and they're instead replaced by the purchases of the 19, 20 school
So we're proposing this seven bus, this seven, purchase of seven vehicles, based on what our needs would be for the 19, 20 school year. We would like to have a 30-passenger bus, 48-passenger, 48-passenger would be, we've got some bells and whistles on that one for, we are the posy, the traction control, some air conditioning, and heated mirrors. This bus would service us positively by, we've had several ESY programs during the summer that they take in trips, and we need air-conditioned vehicles for the students, and we had to actually send four buses out. We could send one out, and that would reduce the cost to the driver and monitor on the bus as well. We're looking for five 77-passenger buses. I'd like to point out that we're asking for these buses in gasoline. May Pack and Arlington have already been purchasing buses in gasoline, we do have gasoline on-site, and the package of four 77-passenger vehicles in diesel would actually be the same cost as five in gasoline. There's a couple of other things I really wanted to point out, that it would be eco-friendly, you know, I know a lot of you at the schools, and you can have the buses start up with those fumes, and worry about the children. There wouldn't be any additive, like Joe, we talked about before, Joe saved us all that money, there wouldn't be additive for those buses. Diesel buses need to be plugged in during the winter, there's an electrical cost to that, to make sure that they start. We have gasoline on-site currently. The 30-passenger buses for the past five years have only been available with gasoline, and we have already been purchasing those in gasoline. So new to us would be the 48 and the 77. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned all of that to you, because I was ending one up quicker, unless I had any time. So if you'll be kind enough to approve our seven buses, we, this is the office's emotion of thanking you for your continued support of approving our seven buses, everything. Thank you.
So again, the next step in this process would be for the Board to adopt a resolution approving Proposition Number Two, to be presented to the voters in May, along with the traditional budget vote. And now I will quickly transition to our tax cap presentation, which is an update from the presentation that we had on January 22nd. This is one of the, another one of the presentations that we would have presented on February 12th, had we not been snowed out that day. So this is a review of, so this is a review of the presentation from January 22nd. There are four components to the tax cap, four main components. The first component we're gonna be reviewing again, which we reviewed on the 22nd, is the tax base growth factor. It's derived using a one-year change factor, it's calculated by New York State. The New York State Department of Tax and Finance, it's based on information as reported by the local assessors' office. It measures brick and mortar, new construction of new buildings, and also significant additions to existing buildings, which increase the size of the tax base. Brewster Central School District has no control or input over this factor, again, it's reported on, it's reported by local assessors to the New York State Department of Tax and Finance. So what's driving the increase in the tax base? After reaching out to the local assessors of both Southeast and Patterson, we learned that there were some significant additions to existing commercial properties, as well as brand-new construction of other commercial buildings. So notably, it is the Brewster Honda showroom, it is the Peach Lake Hotel, it is the additions to Ace Entico, and the largest factor, or the largest contributor, was the Algonquin Natural Gas Transmission Station, that was a brand-new construction building that came on at the assessment rolls. So what happens in this case is the commercial properties actually dilute the tax burden of the existing residential properties, because they're shrinking their slice of the pie. So if you look at these two pie charts here, on the left-hand side, you have a sample of what the assessment allocation is currently. It's roughly a 70/30 split, where the residential properties in the blue here are paying about 70% of the tax share, and then the red is the commercial properties that are paying about 30% of the tax share. So if you move over to the right-hand side, it shows what the impact will be, and again, this is for illustration only, of the tax shift that would occur. So now, the red, red portion of the pie is growing and shrinking the blue portion, and that represents the tax shift that would occur for the tax burden across all of these commercial and residential properties. The next factor is the allowable growth factor, which is also where the tax cap gets its name. It is based on the lesser of 2% or the change in Consumer Price Index, so it's where the tax cap gets its misnomer, is a 2% tax cap. This year, the change in the CPI was about 2.4%, so for purposes of the tax cap calculation, 2% was used. And again, in this regard, the school district has no input or control over this factor, it's based on the change in the cost of basic goods and services in comparison to prior year. And also, I just want to note these, these past two, so the aggregate impact of the change in the tax base growth factor up here in the right-hand corner, had a $1.2 million increase to the tax levy. And in terms of aggregate levy increase, it has a 1.67% increase, so it's pretty, pretty high. The allowable growth factor has a 1.9%, 1.97% aggregate increase on the tax levy of $1.5 million. So those two, which we again discussed at the January 22nd board meeting, are the main drivers of the tax cap increase for the 19, 20 school year. Finally, we have pilot agreements, which are payments in lieu of taxes. These are agreements that are negotiated between the Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency and commercial businesses, in order to operate within the community. It's, they negotiate it on behalf of the town, the county, and the school district, all which are taxing jurisdictions. So the impact of pilot agreements, expiring pilots actually increase the tax cap, because they are now going back onto the assessment roll, and they're able to absorb a portion of the tax burden that they're responsible for. New pilots actually decrease the tax cap, because instead of receiving tax payments through the tax collection process, commercial businesses are instead sending payment directly to the school, and to the town, and to the county. So the impact of the pilot agreement changes on 19, 20 is really negligible, a slight decrease of $9,000 or 1, 100%. And like the other two factors, Brewster has no input or control over this factor. But we get to the capital exclusion, which is our capital construction debt, net of building aid. And this took a long time to try to reconcile our building aid, which comes out in our state aid allocation each January, and we solicited the assistance of Questar Boses, who are the state aid planning specialists for all of the 700 school districts throughout the state, because it's very complicated, and oftentimes, as we discussed at our last Budget 101, oftentimes, the state is actually wrong in their projection of what we will receive in state aid, and it requires a significant amount of reconciliation to actually drill down and, you know, sort through and find out what we're actually gonna receive. Just as an aside, and I'll talk about it a moment later, but the, our state aid projections are typically much higher than the amount of aid that we receive, and that's available on our Budget 101 website, there's a bar chart showing it. So back to this presentation though, an increase in capital exclusion, increase in the tax cap, and the reason for this is because the voters have already approved the capital construction through a prior referendum vote. So any costs associated with that capital, with the capital project are considered an add-on to the tax cap and increase the tax. add-on to the tax cap and increase the tax cap. Decrease in the capital exclusion, decrease in the tax cap, and the reason for that is the construction is complete and the debt is paid off, so therefore, there's no requirements to raise additional taxes. And Brewster has limited input or control over this factor, and through effective long-range financial planning, community support for capital improvement projects, we can stabilize the capital exclusion. However, what often happens is, or maybe an unintended consequence of the tax cap is, we have projects that were completed 10 to 15 years ago where we were receiving building aid and/or paying debt long before the tax cap came into play. So what happened affecting the 19-20 year is we actually had a reduction in building aid. So our state aid went down in the form of building aid, and that was because a project that we were receiving aid on was, you know, reached its completion of the amortization of the building aid revenue. So we had a revenue shortage from building aid, which resulted in an increase to our capital exclusion, the impact of which in aggregate is 0.43% increase or $322,000. And I also hyperlentier our long-range financial plan, because we talked about how important it is to stabilize the capital exclusion through long-range financial planning and also through long-range capital plan. So here's a summary of all the four components as I just described them. Again, you can see the top two factors here, the tax base growth factor and the allowable growth factor represent the lion's share of the tax cap increase together. Those two components alone are about 3.6%. The other determinant was the capital exclusion, which increased just 0.43%. So in total, our tax cap for 2019-20 is 4.06%. Now, looking back over the past several years, actually, over the past seven years, our tax cap and tax levy increases have always been very consistent at around 2%, sometimes slightly more, sometimes slightly less, but very consistent. And that's been somewhat a gift and a curse, because we've grown accustomed to tax levy increases that are right around 2%. So I just want to show over the past five years what has been driving our tax cap increase. And you can see that each year is unique. So if you start with the 15-16 year, we have a tax cap of 2.18%. The major determinant in that one was that blue bar, which is the allowable growth factor with the change in CPI. You can see the capital exclusion was rather small, as well as the changes in pilots was rather small, and also the tax base growth factor. Fast forward to the 16-17 year, and you see that the major determinant in that tax cap was the capital exclusion. So what happened in 16-17? The Wells Middle School project, the addition project that was completed several years back, the bond was issued for that project, so we had new debt coming on. Again, debt being an add-on to the tax cap, and that was the major determinant in our tax cap increase of 2.18%. However, that year, the Board elected to not levy the full tax cap, instead they issued a levy of just 1.94%, so they didn't utilize the full ability of the tax cap. Moving on to 17-18, the tax cap was 2.04, allowable growth factor was the main determinant there. 18-19, the same, however, if you look at the, that orange bar that's below the 0% line, the reason why that orange bar actually reduced the tax cap is because we had a new pilot. And as I mentioned earlier, new pilots actually reduce the tax cap. So if not for that new pilot, our tax cap last year probably would have been closer to 2.8%. And again, the capital exclusion is negligible now. So now, fast forward to 19-20. As we just mentioned, we had a significant increase in the allowable growth factor. So just compare the, the blue bars over the past several years. It's really been pretty consistent, increasing levy by maybe 0.4% or less. The 19-20 tax cap is largely driven by the increase in the tax base growth factor, which is, it's a good thing, because it means that the tax base is growing, it means that there are more contributors to, to, you know, the payment of taxes, and it's able to dilute the burden of all the existing homeowners. The other, the dark blue bar is the change in the CPI. Again, that increased it by 2% alone, and then the green bar is the capital exclusion, which increased by 0.43%. So I know I laid a lot on you tonight, but I just also want to, you know, just show that it's not uncommon to have a tax cap increase of over 4%. This is based on last year, school districts in Pudle and Westchester County and the Lower Hudson region, there were five districts that had tax caps over 4%. All five of them went out with levy increases of over 4%. All five of them passed. In addition to these five, there were 11 others that had tax caps of above 3%. They all went out with levies of above 3%, and they all also passed. So it's not uncommon, it's just hasn't happened in Brewster, so I wanted to present that. You know, it is, it is not uncommon to have a tax cap increase over 4%. And obviously, the reasons why I described are Brewster's control. There's, there is nothing that Brewster did that could have impacted that. It's the allowable growth factor and the tax base growth factor that drove that out. So for the Board's consideration, not for immediate response, but certainly for consideration over the next two budget presentations, the Board needs to provide parameters of what the levy increase should be for next year. The budget, as it's currently constructed, is based on the premise that we have a tax cap of 4.06, and the budget was constructed based on a 4.06 levy increase. However, as you can see here from this chart, the Board were to elect to limit the tax cap in levy an amount less than the tax cap. For example, 3% would require a reduction of $783,000 of additions that were put into the current construct of the budget. So with that, we'll change gears again to the initial budget presentation for next year. Again, it's based on the premise of a 4.06 tax cap increase for the Board to consider.
Thank you. The concept of the additional tax revenue is something that we're going to spend a lot of time talking about, because we don't want that number of 4.06 to be a number that suggests that we are now suddenly spending lavishly and not conscious of the burden to the taxpayer. In this sense, 4.06 means that there's additional revenue being, that's in the district that makes it possible for us to increase programs and continue programs and to provide some of the services and assistance that we've all talked about. Certainly, it's a major departure from last year. And as Victor's mentioned, and we will continue to mention over and over again, that the key factor in terms of the difference between last year and this year is the TRS rate, the Teacher's Retirement System rate. So this year, we're looking at a 8.4, 8.8 contribution rate. Last year, it was around 13 or?
10.
10.6, 10.6%. I'm going to make it higher. And what that means is, it was the difference between, you know, $600,000 that we had to come up with and have to figure out how we were going to reduce in the budget, and we had to make some pretty, you know, tough decisions with regards to not replacing positions that were vacant as a result of the attrition, not laying off anyone, which was also something that we really were happy we didn't need to do. But it did result in us having to reduce programs and services, and we're happy this year that we don't have to do that. And as I said, the primary driver is the fact that our TRS rate is lower, as well as the additional revenue that has been brought into the tax levies. So this evening, what we want to do is to make sure that we, the entire budget team, the budget managers, actually share with you the decision that they made in their budgets to continue to focus on how we are preparing our children for life, work, and future learning in Brewster, in terms of what they're going to do after they graduate and go on and do great things in their lives. As you know, the profile of a graduate is a significant part of our focus and our mission in the district. And these skills are skills that we talk about regularly throughout the school year. We are engaged in learning walks to see how these skills look in the classroom, what the impact is on curriculum, on instruction, on assessment, on the learning environment, on professional learning. And you'll hear in the presentations from our budget managers and all of our administrators, who work really hard to be mindful of how they organize their budgets and what went into their budgets, because it's all in service to making sure that we prepare all children to be successful in life, in life, work, and future learning. And as I said earlier, the budget managers are the best ones to explain the decisions that they've made and how they're continuing to nourish and to support really important learning opportunities for our children. Victor mentioned some of these earlier, and these are the priorities that we're all working within, on the framework that we're working within. We obviously want to make sure that through the addition of our budget managers, that we reemphasize some of the important concepts that were discussed in our Budget 101 presentations. And I want to thank Victor for organizing, as well as bringing in some key guest speakers to help demystify some of the components. And we had a very live audience there. I know people are very busy and commuting and doing all the things that they need to do in their lives, but if they, if you were not able to attend the Budget 101s, it's really important that you take a look at that information on our website. It really talks about, you know, as Victor mentioned, some of our constraints, some of the things we have no control over. We're going to show one of the important slides, which really shows the distribution of how we use a budget in our school district. And as you know, and if you were at the Budget 101s or you looked at the materials, almost 80% of the budget is in human beings. As a service industry, it's all the people needed to educate children and to make the system work. And that's nothing that we have control over, and there are contracts that drive those, and we talked about those things in our Budget 101s. And these are not things that we have, you know, we can wave a magic wand and change indiscriminately. They require negotiations and conversations with a number of people. But we obviously are mindful, because one of the things that we absolutely want to make sure that's made clear, that our budget managers will tell you, is that we do use a zero-based budgeting concept. Every budget manager has to defend every choice that they've made. They are not, we just don't roll the budget over and say, well, it's been last year, so we're going to do the same thing, you know, in the coming year. They defend and they justify and they analyze the choices that they make. As you know, the tax cap is the tax cap that's not going to change. Our governor doesn't have appetite for changing it, and even though every year advocacy teams go to Albany and advocate for that adjustment, that's simply not, doesn't seem like that's on the horizon as a change. So we have to work within that construct, and we continue to, and will, you know, each year get better and better at it. Last year, we talked about reducing the contingency. As you know, contingency is very important in a, in a district or in a system that has mandated services. And this year alone, we've added more staffing in our, for students with I E Ps and those programs as they, they spread and the needs of the students change, we have to make sure that we adjust those, so that those programs and those services continue to be very successful. As I mentioned, we use a system of budgeting that both looks at historical expenditure, as well as looking at how, you know, looking at analyzing and making sure that we justify every change in expense in our budget. New mandates are always on the horizon. We talk a lot about the changes and the requirements to have elementary school counselors, and part of that mandate was made early this year with the inclusion of our elementary school counselors, one at JFK and one at City Star. And a mandate, one that we all agree to, and that it is very important to offer to our children because of the needs that we're seeing with children. And there are mandates in terms of mental health and the integration of those, mental health into our health and education program. There, some of that is already there, but we still have to make sure, continue to make sure they're aligned to those things. You obviously know that we have expectations on the effort that we have to fulfill, as says the Every Student Succeeds Act, and we have no control over those mandates, but we have to make sure that we provide the staffing to ensure the success of those students and every student. We continue to look at the enhancement of safety and security in our district. That's been maintained, I think, on an ongoing basis, and we keep our eyes open and we make sure that we're always looking at systems. You've heard Mr. Trulore describe, a system of how we do automatic locking, lockdown, so that we have a more efficient way of doing that and managing that and using technology. And all of that requires resources to make sure that we do those things well. Strengthening our academic and social-emotional practices, again, we have to, that's part of our mission under our F C P. And obviously, there's no place in this country where districts are not looking at ways to strengthen those programs, and we need to continue to, and we have been doing so. And then again, the focus on making sure that all of our children have access to these success skills, so that when they graduate from our school district, they're able to tolerate differences, they're able to work well with many different people, they're able to think and solve problems and be creative and innovative, and be able to not only be a part of the community, but to change it and to enhance it. So we want, we want to make sure that all of our children have those opportunities and that part of that, you'll hear from the budget managers with regards to how that is happening, and it continues to. And we're not the only district that has organized this framework for success, this blueprint for 21st century learning. We continue to, it's not something where we get, we had an expiration date and we've done it. It's ongoing, and it's, and it's work that our budget managers, our administrators, will talk to you about in terms of some of the ways in which we are continuing certain programs and strengthening and adding others.
So this slide, typically each year, we'd deal right now, and at this point, last year, we were trying to figure out how do we close, I want to say it was a $600,000 budget gap. So this year, we're crossing out our challenges and we're looking at the opportunities that we have with this budget. I just mentioned our tax cap allows for a 4.06% increase, which is pretty significant. Will allow the district to restore programs and to build programs that in the past were unable to be accomplished because of restrictions of the tax cap. The majority of increase again is due to the tax base growth factor, which again is because of the commercial property growth within the tax base. So that again is a good thing and certainly an opportunity. Pension contribution relief. So the TRS system, the rate-to-rate change this year, actually resulted in a decrease of 16.6%. And that is an extremely, extremely volatile change, in a good way this year. As we experienced last year, it was a change in a bad way, we had an 8.5% increase. And you'll see in the next slide the impact of that. The employees' retirement system had a rate-to-rate decrease of 2%. And interest rates are on the rise. So interest rates have increased from nearly 0% to 2%. And, you know, when you have an average daily balance in the, you know, in the millions of dollars, that impact on the revenue budget is pretty significant. So we do have a significant increase in our revenue budget. So year-to-year volatility, as you can see, you know, no two years are alike, and these are based on factors that are beyond our control. As Dr. Henning mentioned, the TRS rate is really, you know, almost dictating what we do on a year-to-year basis. Last year, we had a rate-to-rate increase of 8.4%, and that resulted in several hundred thousands of dollars of additional costs that hit the 18-19 budget. Contrast that with 19-20, where we have a rate-to-rate decrease of 16.6%. And that's going to result in several hundred thousand dollars of cost avoidance. Combine the two, and you're in the neighborhood of, you know, $800 to $1 million. Doctor?
And in terms of TRS, one of the takeaways that's really important is that this vacillates every, from year to year. Next year could be like last year, or it could be like this year, and we don't know. We don't know that, you know, when we start our planning, which starts pretty early, October, November, we start our meeting with the budget managers and trying to pull together our best sort of estimate of what, what to anticipate and what may occur. And we still don't know that information until around late November, early December. So that is a true moving target, and something that is very influential when it comes to how we construct the budget. Other factors that are really key to consider, and it's not just that it's an S mandate, but providing career and technical education is a very fundamental part of how we educate all children. There are children who are participating in the Pudle, Northern, Westchester Boses program and are doing phenomenal work in learning many valuable, marketable skills. And we need to make sure that we continue to provide opportunities for children to participate in those programs. We don't have control over the cost of those programs, they increase every year like every other service increases, and that you'll also see in, as the budget managers make their presentations. And yet, we also don't have control over enrollment. We certainly try to manage by educating our children and by providing some expectations around attendance and performance, to make sure that they are taking the program seriously and that it isn't just, you know, something to do. And Mrs. Corley can certainly speak to the, the numbers of children who are absolutely dedicated to doing very well in these programs and making sure that they come out with skills that they can actually use in the whole world. But that, those rates are increasing, and there's a calculation, or three-year average that locks us in literally every, over the course of three years. So if one year, we have 99 students, and the next year, we have 120, and the next year, we have 66, there's an average. And we, in each year, we charge the average, rather than... And each year, we charge the average rather than having it reflect the actual number of children enrolled. We don't have control over that. But we can certainly tell you that the programs at Pudle Northern Westchester BOCES that we've seen have been really helpful for children and they're constantly being upgraded and renewed so that children remain interested in mostly, most importantly, that children are learning really marketable skills for the future.
All right, so I won't review this slide. We just flipped it a minute ago. So here's a look at our initial revenue budget. As I mentioned, we had a tax levy or a tax cap increase that allows for a 4.06% increase or $3 million. Local sources are our payments and blow of taxes, interest donations, interfund transfers, miscellaneous revenues. As I mentioned, interest revenues are increasing significantly as a result of rising interest rates. So that increased by about $700,000. State federal aid has slightly decreased just $400,000 or 2.2%. Again, what was reviewed in our state aid and tax cap Budget 101 is that each year on average, for the past four years, we receive about $400,000 less than what the state says that we're going to receive. So each year, we need to do reconciliation. And I urge caution at the Budget 101 not to pay too much or weigh too much attention into what the state is projecting our aid will be because it always requires reconciliation and it always amounts in a lesser amount. Finally, appropriated fund balance. We're recommending an appropriated fund balance of just $1.5 million, down from last year. And with that, on the other side of the expenditure budget is also a reduction in contingency for the unforeseen. So just wanted to note that our tax levy is still tentative and it's pending the taxable status date, which is March 1st. That affects our pilot agreements and also the enacted state budget. The state budget hopefully will be adopted on April 1st, pending negotiation between the governor and the legislature. So in total, our budget allows for a $3 million increase or a 3% increase. So where does the funding come from? So this is an infographic from the Budget 101 workshop. Really, New York State is controlling 95% of our revenue budget. It's actually slightly more than that. You can see here in the form of the tax cap and state aid, the state is determining what our revenue budget is. And the district only controls, and the word "control" I use very loosely because we can't control, that's the interest rates and we can't force people to donate money to us. The district only controls a very small portion of the budget. So the state is really dictating how we construct our budget through the tax cap and through state aid. And here's a look at the summary of our expenditure budget. General support increased by about $400,000. And Mr. Trailer will talk about some necessary technology infrastructure that's leading to that increase. Instruction, so our instruction budget is increasing $1.6 million. That's the lion's share of our increase, which is targeted towards instruction. Obviously, a good reason why we're here. Transportation budget has increased just 2%. Employee benefits has increased 5%. Debt is actually decreasing slightly by about $100,000. Interfund transfer to special aid fund is decreasing slightly 4%. And that's the money that the general fund has to pick up for the summer school instruction for our special needs students. Unit of the budget for this year is a transfer to capital fund for a mini project. So New York State has a program for capital improvement projects that are below $100,000 in cost. And it allows for the district to recoup the building aid in the year following the expense. So instead of having to recoup it over a period of 10 years, you're recouping it in the very next year, which you expended. So we have a need at JFK to replace exterior doors and locks in order to improve, of course, our safety and security. And we're proposing a transfer to capital fund to complete that project in one year and then recoup approximately $50,000 in building aid in the next year. So again, our expenditure budget is increasing $1.3 million or 3%.
And this is actually, again, one of the important infographics that we use during the Budget 101s to further illustrate how much control we do not have. So 78% of our budget is invested in benefits and salaries. And all of those are based upon contracts. And if you recall at Budget 101s, I mentioned, Victor and I mentioned, that every employee in this district functions under a contract that's negotiated. And every contract is negotiated. It has historical information that just doesn't simply get changed because we want to change it and reduce it. We have to negotiate those for every person under a particular contractor or under a bargaining unit. So 78% of all budget that Victor just reviewed goes into running this service organization. As Victor mentioned earlier, the debt, a fairly small portion of it. And in terms of equipment, contract supplies, BOCES service, all of those are based upon the uses that we've, what we've seen in the past, what we know, for example, when we develop the budget for the career technical education program as an example. We're certainly looking at trends over time and the numbers of students who actually enroll. And then we make decisions based upon that. Ms. Corley just doesn't say, "Okay, we're going to just allocate 100 spots for 150 students." She looks at who's actually participated. And many of those programs require two-year, consecutive year participation. So we know exactly how many students are enrolling and that's how we make decisions about the numbers of students who are participating in that particular program as a part of the BOCES service. And that's pretty standard practice across all of those, equipment and contracts and so forth. And many of those are also based upon increases that are built in that we have no control over. All we do very judiciously is to look very carefully at need, analyze the need and justify the need. And that's how we try to make sure that we keep those costs at 14% or keep them very low and be very mindful of what we're doing. Again, we certainly want to make sure that we always focus on our mission and our priorities in the system, which is to children. We're a system that educates children. The children are our clients. We know that the public pays the bill, but the children are the clients. And all that we do is in service to making sure that they're successful when they leave us and they can go on out into the world and feel comfortable and confident that they have the skills and the knowledge to be able to be successful. So this roadmap is truly about what happens to children when they enter the district, it's kindergarten and all the way up until they graduate from the school district. That there's certain priorities that are part of the green that represents kinds of services and programs and opportunities that we make available to children. Many of them are not new, as you can see, and JRTC is not new. You know, other kinds of opportunities may be a little new. Project-based learning, which is something that's integrated into any content area to help children to apply the content and their skills to solve real problems, which is really what children have to be able to do to be successful in the world. They just can't know about content for the sake of content. They have to be able to solve problems with the content. So again, this is just to remind you and for us to be reminded that this is our own roadmap to be able to ensure that we're always focusing on the needs of children. The first budget code is a budget code that actually is in, that covers the Board of Education, District Clerk, as well as the District Meetings. So all legal notices, contractual, copiers, that each department, you'll see this is a continued expense that every department shares. New board member training is a requirement. When the board takes an oath, they take an oath to be able to know exactly what they're doing and their roles and they have to provide, to be trained for that. It's a district liability if they're not, so that's very, very important. Professional memberships to different organizations like NISBA, which is a major advocacy organization and all board members are part of that. And those groups spend a lot of time trying to make sure that the needs of the district and then obviously, needs of children are met. Conference fees, whenever we have to go to a NISBA conference, there are fees associated with those and we don't have any control over that. They never allow us to go free. So we have to make sure that we always budget for that. And budget newsletter, which is very important. Mr. Carlson and I met with Ms. Jennifer Gary to review that and again, to develop that so we have that out to you as soon as possible. And as you can see, there's been no increase in that code. Supplies, again, general office supplies, copier, toner supplies and papers, also distributed props, all the budget codes. And again, there's no increase in that. BOCES services, the super intensive evaluation service, which is what Ms. Seepa mentioned, is an online service that's a requirement. Again, that hasn't increased. And board policy review and support, which you heard Ms. Gosh speak a lot about, that's a service, we have to make sure that we have the most up-to-date policies and that's through the Gary BOCES service, policy service, which allows us to make sure that we have those available and that we are making sure that we comply with all the required mandates. So there's no increase from the 18, 19 and the 1920.
And you saw in that slide, I'll just run it from the chart to it. I put in each slide the share of the overall budget that each of the different departments has. And you see that the Board of Ed, District Clerk, District Meeting Superintendent, all those departments in total represent 7/100 of 1% of the budget. So it's a really, really small amount of total budget. Moving on to the finance portion of the budget, represents 0.15 of 1% of the budget. The contractual costs, we have enrollment, forecasting, fixed asset, actuarial reporting, internal, we have four levels of audit, we have internal, external, claims auditor. This year, we have an OSC, Office of State Controller Audit. Dr. Henning mentioned and you'll see throughout each of the budget managers, copier and printer leases, property tax bill preparation, fiscal advisor services for our long-term debt issues, our bonds and bands. Each year, we have a fiscal advisor that assists us. Professional memberships, purchasing consortium memberships in order to participate in cooperative purchasing, as we even said, we'll actually be discussing in a few board meetings as we participate in diesel fuel and BOCES bidding and things that I mentioned. Supply budget, copier, printer, toner, copier paper, check stock and the tax bills that we prepared here. BOCES services include state evaluation and planning services, I mentioned earlier. We rely on Questar BOCES along with the other 700 school districts around the state to help us analyze our state aid. If you could look at the Budget 101 presentation, you'll see that any of the one state aid components could have up to 188 different lines in the calculation. So it's very, very, very thorough. And we certainly need experts in that field to dissect it. Total finance budget remains constant at 140.3%.
So the human resources portion of the budget represents 0.18%. Under contractual, we have professional learning for human resources as well as office equipment leases. You'll see that this will decrease next year and that is due to the movement of the affordable care compliance down to BOCES services. Under supplies, there's a $200 increase. And under BOCES services, this covers such things as the employee assistance program, online application system, contract negotiations, talent ed, which is a capless onboarding and personnel platform, as well as affordable care compliance. So that's why you see the increase down to BOCES services for two reasons. Because of the movement of the affordable care compliance as well as the addition of the capless application and record keeping system, which will be electronic personnel files, which we're very excited about. So the overall increase for human resources is about $13,000 and 7.9%.
So I have joined with me this evening is Mr. Kenny Mitch from our facilities department. So if you have any questions related to the facilities budget, he's certainly capable of answering these. Our equipment budget remains constant at $15,000. That's if we need any of these equipment items, floor polishers, steamers, churners and homewares, things of that nature. Our contractual expenses include training for our employees, uniform and tool reimbursements, which is a contractual obligation through collective bargaining agreements, our insurance for our vehicles, architectural and engineering services. As we often mention, we are in the DEP wetlands and that requires a significant amount of compliance with not only New York City DEP, but also New York State, the ECP Department of Environmental Conservation. Our contractual costs for utilities, natural gas and electricity make up the lion's share of the utility budget. It's about $1 million for those two alone. Propane and oil are backup systems in the event of failure in telephone. And that budget actually is decreasing. And the reason why we're able to decrease that budget is because at this point last year, we purchased our electricity and natural gas through a cooperative consortium. So we purchased those commodities through a bidding process. And that bidding process hadn't taken place until after the budget vote. So we actually had a successful budget, excuse me, successful bid resulting, we're able to reduce the electric and natural gas utilities. However, we are still subject to delivery costs in ICEG. And I'm sure as homeowners, you're aware that ICEG delivery costs have been increasing and the school district is subject to the same delivery cost increase that homeowners are experiencing. So we were able to decrease that budget, but not significantly. Service contracts are for all of our plumbing, electrical HVAC, alarm systems, boilers and things of that nature. That budget are increasing. Our supply budget, it remains about the same at $419,000 for all of the things that are used here, cleaning supplies, materials for repairs, salt, sand, seed and mulch and things of that nature. Our BOCES services has increased slightly because we shifted facility scheduling software through BOCES. And just as a note, anything that we purchase through BOCES, the district receives state aid, BOCES aid on these purchases. So it's always, always, always a good opportunity if there's a service that's available through BOCES to utilize the service of BOCES because then the district receives BOCES aid in the following year. So through BOCES, we have our risk management co-sir, which assists us in our risk management program here, our participation on our school health emergency repairness committee. They assist us in developing our emergency response plans, in tabletop training for staff members, as well as a number of safety trainings for our facilities department, for safe work habits, as well as emergency response for all of our support staff, instructors, teachers, everyone. And then also energy monitoring is again, part of the cooperative utility purchasing of natural gas and electricity. So in total, our facilities department budget is actually increasing just 1.5%. So one caveat that we included here, and this is something that we reviewed at our Budget 101 workshop, is within our facilities budget, we include an amount of contingency for the unknown because on this date, we don't know how many terms of natural gas we will use next winter, 15 months from now. We don't know how many snowstorms we'll have. We don't know if it'll be snowier than normal or what is even considered normal anymore. We don't know how many kilowatts of electricity we'll use next year. Will the summer and fall be hotter than normal? How many service calls will we need to repair plumbing, HVAC or electrical issues? If you recall, a few years ago, we had a significant issue here at Wells where we had one of our feeders outside, if that's the right terminology, that blew. And it was a pretty significant, you know, significant amount of damage. Those things are unpredictable, which is why it's important that we have contingency within our facilities budget. So we don't always budget for normal, we budget for anticipated worst-case scenario. The next category here is unallocated general support. So these are items that aren't allocated to a specific budget manager, but rather they're general, you know, unallocated general support. So we have our legal expenses, which remains the same at $270,000. That includes fees for general counsel, bond counsel for when we issue debt or bands and also impartial hearing officers. Records management, public information is related to our records retention and disposal policy and also our publicity. And we see a slight decrease here, however, we've reallocated some of the publicity to the technology and innovation budget. Again, another reason why you see an increase in that budget category. Technology training and mailing remains about the same, slight decrease at $3,000. Unallocated insurance is our property casualty insurance, remains about the same, slight decrease. School association dues for federal, state, local memberships remains constant at $60,000. Claims remains the same. Property tax refunds has a decrease there. And if you'll actually look over the past three years, which I'll be uploading to the website shortly, a three-year history of budget versus actual for reference. But if you look over the past three years, our expenses for refund of real property taxes has been significantly higher than the $64,000 and especially more than, of course, than the $50,000 that we're budgeting. However, we have a reserve for tax certs. So oftentimes, we are drawing down on that reserve to make those payments. And what this $50,000 represents is the deficiency of what we don't have to buy and reserve in the general fund, therefore must pay. Our BOCES admin and capital charge represents our participation fee to join our local BOCES and then increase just 1.6%. Library dues is our annual distribution to our public libraries. It was approved by a resolution of the board, I want to say. It was approved by a resolution of the board, I want to say in nineteen ninety-six, and we're down to it. So we've been providing funds to our local libraries for the past twenty years or so, and that is just twelve thousand dollars. So in total, our unallocated general support budget decreased by two point three percent.
Good evening. When I developed this portion of the budget, I think, how can I best support, how can this budget best support the important work that's going on in schools in terms of the curriculum instruction assessment and professional learning? And we want to make sure that we give teachers and staff all that we can, all the tools and resources in order to improve student learning. So this budget includes, we'll skip contractual, four-minute supplies, about the same, tuition. This is really also known as tutoring, since this is for students who cannot attend school for one reason or another, there's a decrease there. For OSC's general education, Dr. Hank, Pidma, and Charlestown talked about three-year average that happens with OSCs. So this is, we're enjoying this decrease next year, because we know in the years to come, that will spike, but those are for students who attend on, I'm talking occupational end, students who attend in Yorktown. For OSC's general education, these are onsite support services, things like New York State Assessment Scoring, and different sorts of subscriptions that we have that we receive aid on, such as credit recovery and different e-learning programs. But let's get to the contractual piece, because that's where the significant increase exists. So sixty thousand dollars of this increase is budget neutral. We offer courses at the high school, Three Duchess Community College, I think it's English one oh one and one oh two. The way this works is, they send us a tuition bill, and then we bill them in kind for that same exact amount, and facility uses usage fees. So it's a wash, but that's the way their system works, and that's how we have to do so this is the budget line that this falls on. The remaining contractual items in here mostly have to do with professional learning support. And I would say that all of the, every dollar that is planned for this professional learning has been teacher-supported. Teachers have given through different task force, through different math study teams, through different CS R A work that we have done. All of this has been asked for by teachers, and they have a hand in crafting this as it takes place. Now, what we try and do with this, we budget for this in this code, but then in late June, early July, when our title grants come in, titles one, two, and three, which we've spoken about before, then we know what our allocation is. What we've been able to do is to pay for certain things through those title grants that we then are able to give back at the end of the year. But we budget for them here, the professional learning needs that have been identified through different collaborative groups throughout the system, and then when the title grants come in, we do our best to offset those costs through the use of the grants.
So if you look at the top right-hand corner of JFK, you see that rock being pushed up the hill there. You know Stevie Starr has been going, JFK's been going through a metamorphosis over the last few years, and really been going through a lot of change. And where we were able to bring down some costs contractually, some of our supplies are increasing. And these are things like our next-gen science work, where we are adding Project Lead the Way, some consumables for next-gen science with Science Twenty-One program. And one of the things that the community should know, that even though JFK went through this big construction surge, in last year, our auditorium wasn't ready at the beginning of the year, nor was the IDEA room. Now that those pieces are finished, we're adding more manipulatives to the program for teachers in their classrooms. Project Lead the Way has a lot of expenses to start that up. Our IDEA room, innovation, discovery, exploration, and amazement, that room needs to be supplied, so we're shifting some funds to get materials in there for the teachers and the children. And we still are looking to add more things, and I hope the board considers the air conditioning piece to be moving to school without air conditioning fully, just adding that. There are things we still would like to get done at JFK.
Good evening, everybody. So in addition to piggybacking what Dr. Sam was sharing, in addition to some of these increases, for example, we've also had to purchase new textbooks, excuse me, workbooks for Howard Where's Their Way program, which supports our TC readers writing workshop. We have LLI level literacy intervention kits. We've had to purchase more of those. We started with the baseline the year before, and we added more. Classroom books, several rooms were leveled and themed books. Our teachers have really done a wonderful job with this. We were able to take advantage of the new structure that we had in the building, and we were able to put a level literacy library together. It's also themed, so we have categories that the kids can go in and pick from. And class sizes, kindergarten projection, if I can jump to that. We'll get to that later, sorry. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, so it's Stevie Starr. If you look on the equipment line, that usually comprises furniture, but this year, we are not ordering any furniture at all. Under the contractual line for curriculum and professional learning support, this talks about teachers college reading writing workshop, addresses OSCs, our licenses and leases, science and art expo materials, and language line translation services. This increase is in for conferences for staff to attend for professional development, predominantly in reading and in the teachers college reading writing workshop. And we continually support this for the SCP skills.
Good evening. We have a decrease in our supply line through looking at how we can better use our supplies that we have, as well as having purchased a lot of what we need prior to this and not meaning to replenish, we have a slight decrease in that. And our textbooks, we have an increase. We took on the Words That Are Way word study portion of ELA this year, a nice continuation from what JFK has started, so it's a great pathway for all of our students, K five, and we want to continue that and supplement that. And we also have a need for a few more library books, both in the classroom and in the library itself, which is a great thing, because our kids do love reading, and the more that they get into our studies in ELA, the more that they ask for more books, and so we're trying to oblige to our request for them.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, good evening, everybody. We have a lot of the same themes, our contractual obligations. You'll notice here that our budget went down by fifty thousand dollars. This is due to the fact that we transferred our technology resources to the technology department. The contractual includes professional memberships, service contracts for copiers, that sort of thing. And again, the technology software was moved to the technology budget. Supplies, general supplies, fashion bids, office supplies. There is an increase here of twenty-four percent, thirty-two thousand dollars. Most of that stems from Project Lead the Way costs. That's just something that we've expanded across the three grade levels for the last couple of years, and it's been a phenomenal success. Textbooks, we've increased by twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-six hundred dollars, and that's basically due to the fact that what we've noticed is that we've been borrowing from the English department year after year to pay for additional in-house supplies for our English language learners, so we added a little bit more money so that we can fund that as well. Thank you.
So for the high school, what you'll notice is a large increase, I'm going to jump right into the large increase in supplies. What happened was our equipment budget number was changed, so our furniture budget is incorporated into the supply code. We have a large building. We switch out department furniture, classroom furniture, general classroom furniture to outfit. Desks and chairs can go anywhere from five thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars, depending on the furniture you buy. So it's a large undertaking, a very expensive undertaking. We have graduation, scholars night, graduation, the cost of graduation alone is upwards of ten thousand dollars for the programs and for the cost of the facilities at Westcott. We also have an increase in our Project Lead the Way. We have a three thousand dollar fee per course, plus the supplies for each individual class, which is part of the large increase in supplies. Our contractual number has also gone up by twenty-four percent, and what we're putting, what that is paying for is training for a lot of our teachers. We are paying for SUPA training over the summer, AP training, also advanced placement testing costs, any of our testing costs in general, region's costs, all come out of that number. You can see that our textbooks have gone down slightly, and that's intentional. We're trying to steer away from purchasing textbooks, which the high school costs upwards of a hundred and seventy dollars, and stop our reliance on consumables. Instead of using that, we're going to a stronger, more robust online forum. So that's where our costs is. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Liz Kennedy, Director of PPS, and this is Amy O'Sullivan, our Assistant Director of PPS. Thank you for the opportunity to present our budget for next year. So just to give an overview, the PPS department oversees the special education programming for our students district-wide, and also our related services, which include psychological counseling services, speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and also other services provided to our students throughout the district, as well as our health services district-wide. And so as we develop our budget, we're extremely mindful of our students' current needs, as well as the projected needs for next year, as well as meeting our legal obligations to provide students with a free and appropriate education in the least restricted environment. We strive to comply with the state and federal regulations surrounding this, while also providing our students here in Brewster with what they need in order to be successful in their life after they leave Brewster Schools, and to be as independent as possible. And so when we constructed our budget for this year, going into next year and into the nineteen twenties school year, we moved our equipment line into the supplies line for the upcoming year. And within the equipment is our special technology needs, also adaptive furniture, and so that is going to next year, going to be within the supplies. So our equipment has, will be zero for next year, while that amount is factored into the supplies code. Our contractual services is including our cost for therapeutic service providers, also our office equipment leases, cost for independent evaluations, data filing for state aid reimbursement, and our budget for next year is less than what it was for this current year. With respect to supplies, this also includes, in addition to what I mentioned with the equipment, our general instructional classroom materials, assessment materials, such as the standardized testing materials needed for our related service providers and our special education teachers, and as well as the office needs, just copier, printer, toner, copy, copy paper. Much of our proposed budget factors in the cost for students who currently attend out-of-district placements, and out-of-district placements include placements that are at OSCs programs, also local public schools, as well as private schools, and it includes students who are attending day treatment programs, and also students who are attending residential schools. And with respect to OSC services, we also include within our OSC's code the cost for therapeutic services provided to students at OSCs receiving occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, vision services, hearing and counseling services. And so our overall budget, including all of this for the upcoming year, indicates an increase of twelve point six percent.
I wanted to note that the large portion of our increase is due to the out-of-district tuitions. We budget conservatively for scenarios that we can't always plan for. We can't predict how many new students with individual education plans will move into Brewster that require out-of-district placements, or after exhausting all possible least restrictive options in district, first, how many in-district students will require an out-of-district placement. We continue to review and to strengthen our current in-district programs and collaborate with out-of-district placements to develop plans to transition students back to Brewster.
And so overall, as we look at our, as we develop budgetally our current needs, we anticipate projected needs for next year, and overall work to develop the conservative scenarios this year.
I also just want to add to that, one thing that we experienced this year with regard to those tuition payments, there's a, the New York State Education Department actually controls the tuition rates, and there's a department known as the rate-setting unit. And what we experienced this year was that the rate-setting unit hadn't increased any of those rates in the past five years. So we received retroactive billing for our tuition for the previous four years this year, which hit this eighteen, nineteen budget, which we're, of course, unanticipated on budget development. So that's another factor for the increase in the tuition costs, is because the rates have increased significantly through, you know, through the effort or through the effect of the rate-setting unit in New York State Education Department. So again, that's another example of things that we cannot predict, that are, you know, obviously beyond our control. You know, again, unfortunately, it impacted our eighteen, nineteen school budget, something that, you know, wasn't built into the budget, but we are forced to pay it. And then, of course, the ripple effect of future years, now the rates for tuition have increased across the board for all private school providers.
When we look at the technology and innovation budget, it is everything that covers our hardware, the computers, the servers, the infrastructure, the wireless connectivity, the connection out to the internet, all of our data storage, all software, everything that impacts the running of the district, the student instructional software, and as you heard from a number of the administrators that spoke before, we rolled a number of things into, brought them into the technology budget, so that we're purchasing all software through here, et cetera. So that's one of the main reasons that you're going to see some increase here in our budget is the fact that all software purchases and hardware purchases are now happening through the, this technology budget. Another main reason for any increase in the, one of the main goals that we have through this budget is to continue the hardening of our network and maintaining the infrastructure with redundancy, so that it is more reliable, that our network is definitely more protected, and our ability to back up the data, so that should anything go wrong, we're able to recover from any possible catastrophe. And the last thing that really impacts this budget is really working towards long-term planning. We've spoken a number of times at the board meetings about the Smart Schools Bond Act and the influx of cash that has really enabled us to move forward with our wireless connectivity, with the putting computers in the hands of every student, and in order to maintain that and maintain that cycle, I'll be speaking a little bit later about the, doing an installment purchase agreement, and much like we're doing with the budget for the buses, are really looking at maintaining a level expenditures over the next years to maintain the infrastructure and maintain the devices that we're using. So when you look at the different things, a number of other people have mentioned that the equipment has been moved around throughout the budget, so that is zeroed out here. Our contractual increase is from a couple of things. Our contractual increase is from a couple of things. One is moving one of the software, our climate survey, that being pulled into our budget as well as an upgrade in our wireless controllers. It'll add some redundancy so that any of our wireless controllers will be able to fail over to the other one to maintain that. You won't know that anything happened if one of those went down. An increase in the Infinite Campus auditing, having that capability. Infinite Campus really runs all the data on all of our students as our student information system. And the auditing will allow us to really make sure that we can track any of those slight changes that happened, made them with time that happened and be able to look back and really investigate those and really kind of keep track of anything that we're doing within that student information system. The main increase here in the hardware is the need to replace all of our servers. As those age, we become much more vulnerable if any one of them should fail. And the difficulty there is that you can't really spread that out over years, so we were replacing all four of them at once, and that really adds to the cost. But it really makes it so that, again, you can create that redundancy. So any one of them fails, it makes it easier to go to the next one. If you spread it out over years, there are different versions, different capabilities. It's not as easy to do that. So, but again, through some of the purchasing that we're going to talk, I'll talk about briefly, that's part of how we're going to help to kind of even out those, those costs. Software, again, all the increases coming from the different schools, taking those rather than allocating them in the school's budget and transferring money to make those purchases, or even any of the schools making purchases independent of each other, that way we kind of have a full view. We can get some economy of scale by purchasing for multiple schools through, at once. It kind of bargains, we get a better bargain that way as well. And the largest increase is in our BOSI services. And this gets to the, we talked about the installment purchase agreement to try to do the consistent replacement of some of the Chromebooks, the displays throughout the district, other devices, and spreading that cost out over time. And what this, when Victor and I looked at the, you know, really looking to maintain that cost, doing an installment purchase of agreement and spreading that over four years and the paying that, wow, each year, it has a small incremental impact on the budget. But the other component is by doing this through BOSI's and by joining the COSER, Collaborative Service COSER, it makes all of those purchases as well as a number of other purchases that we're already making now, aidable. So through, it's one of those things that through BOSI's, through the state aid model, and we have aid ratios for the administrative portion, which is only the, about twenty percent, is aidable at forty-eight percent. The hardware purchases that we make are aidable at fifty-nine percent. So we are increased by, joining the COSER through BOSI's, it allows us to gain over four hundred thousand dollars in aid back. So it really does increase the, making what we're spending, how we're spending our money and what, that much more efficient by capitalizing on the state aid that we, that we have available to us.
Sorry, what did you say was fifty-nine percent?
Aid, our hardware purchases.
Hello, everyone. So like everybody else who's talking about equipment, this year we have a, you know, zero balance because that's really, you know, we're going for forty-nine, nine ninety-seven. That money has been mostly absorbed by the baseball and softball field grant money from Senator Murphy. And we are in the process of bidding it and getting ready to spend it. Hopefully the weather will cooperate and we can get that done. So, and that money is also going to be shifted, like other people have mentioned before, that code. Contractually, it's a slight increase, as you've mentioned in other parts of the presentation. You know, we do have different contracts, contractually that go up. We do rent outside facilities, we have our athletic trainer, scoreboards or computers, they're constantly need to be serviced, and terminated registration fees. Supplies, physical education, health, at that, we try to stay with flat on the DAF yearly, and our teachers and co's are doing a good job. Same thing would go with supplies, team athletic training supplies. There just is a slight increase there due to the shift of the equipment code. And our BOSI services, like most other BOSI services that people have mentioned this evening, we do get a lot of aid, we get a small amount of aid back. So it's always good to get a little bit of money back. Well, we do include our Section One membership, official fees. Contracts are in the process of going up, so we got to make sure we plan for that. The PE Consortium is a spot where we can train our teachers, phys ed, and help teachers for a flat rate with very minimal cost to us. Family ID is our athletic registration services, and others are technology worship. So that's phys ed athletics enough.
This aspect of the budget represents performing arts and music, K-12. As has happened with other budget areas, equipment has been reclassified to supplies. What you'll see, contractual supplies and textbooks from music ed throughout the next codes, and it's also disaggregated for performing arts as well in terms of supplies and contractual. So this is everything from actual instruments that we purchase, the school-owned instruments, which is driving the six thousand dollar increase, as well as fees for students to participate in various competitions, royalties, replays at the middle school and high school, lighting, sound, as well as some of the actual supplies and materials that are needed in the musical classrooms. So we see a six thousand increase, and again, that is due to school-owned instruments that need to be replaced.
Okay, Mary Smith had to take off for the evening. She is the, she's a town board member over Patterson and had some town business to attend to. So our transportation budget here shows our equipment increasing slightly by ninety-one thousand dollars, and the majority of that increase is due to a one-time renovation project. A necessary project is to replace one of the lifts in our transportation garage. That's been giving us some trouble over the past couple of years. And rather than continuing to invest money into repairing it, we're proposing maybe replace it as a one-time expenditure. Absent this one-time garage lift replacement, the equipment budget would have decreased. And again, the reason for the decrease is most likely due in part to the consistency of our fleet replacement plan. So we have been seeing our parts cost decreasing over the past several years as our fleet becomes newer. Contractual repairs increased slightly, five thousand dollars. This is for restoration work and bodywork, the types of repair work that we can't perform in the transportation garage, like bodywork and painting and actually window replacement is a specialty that is performed by an outside contractor. Contractual expenses for transportation services for our field trips, ambulance BOSI's shuttle have increased by about nine thousand dollars. This is due mostly to an increase in requests for field trip allocations for our students. Contractual expenses for radio lease insurance, driver training, uniform tool reimbursement, and routing software is decreased by about thirty thousand dollars. At this time last year, we were proposing a lease for radios. And again, just like with our, our bid for electricity, natural gas utilities, we didn't know at the time of budget development what the actual cost would be. So we have to, of course, assume a conservative amount. Unfortunately, our radio lease came in lower than what we anticipated. We were unfortunately able to reduce that budget. Supplies for diesel and gasoline, we're able to decrease it slightly. But another, again, this is another area where we do contain contingency for the, you know, possibility of there being some interruption in natural, excuse me, in diesel or gasoline or oil. And, you know, it's only one natural disaster away from gas prices and diesel prices going through the roof. So of course, we make contingency here, but still we're going to reduce the budget slightly. Supplies for cleaning remains about the same, actually about an increase of six thousand dollars there. Increase in training materials for our drivers. Our PPS department has been phenomenal in providing our drivers and monitors with additional training opportunities to assist them in de-escalation techniques for our special needs students and also our general students. In total, our transportation budget is increasing by sixty-four, sixty-five thousand dollars. Again, the majority of that increase is due to a one-time proposal to have a garage lift replaced in the transportation garage. So as I mentioned, we do include contingency in our transportation department budget because we don't know what the price of diesel or gasoline will be fifteen months from now until the budget's adopted. We just reviewed our fleet replacement plan. We've got sixteen buses that are age sixteen or over. And we know from experience that those buses typically require the most service. And, you know, it comes to a point where it's no longer cost-effective for us to continue to replace or to repair those buses and ultimately they fall out of service. So we budget for, not for normal, but anticipate a worst-case scenario in that's order to maintain our operation and not to disrupt the transportation services to our students.
As Victor mentioned, the unallocated instruction is not necessarily attached to any particular budget code, but sort of is universal and driven throughout the system. And I think contractual textbooks is one example, meaning that we do receive aid on those, on textbooks, and we want to make sure that certainly, as Ms. Hoiler, you've heard others mention, wherever we can, we do migrate toward an online system for textbooks, but not all are. And then in some cases, they are not necessarily less expensive. You know, an online service is not necessarily, you know, a great reduction. So, but at the same time, we still want to make sure you're making use of all of our Chromebooks as a source for accessing digital text. So you'll see that there's an actual decrease in that line. I also want to mention something new that actually, this, Dash and I have to focus on. We're actually are receiving some training proposals. And it's something called, and it's one of those unfunded mandates, it's something called substantial equivalency. And that means that districts that have private schools within their boundaries also have to make sure that those private schools are using the resources from Title I, Title II, or Title III that they may be receiving. So that requires some oversight from the district and some training regards to how that should take place. So it used to be that the private schools would receive their allocation from those federal sources and they would simply be mindful of how they're using those resources. We now have to oversee their use of those, and that requires some time. So we can't wait for that training, Ms. Dash. In terms of contractual, we'd like to propose to the Board of Education that a SRO is added to CD Star and that the SPO, who's there, is shifted to Brewster High School, not to replace Deputy Kraski, but to supplement the services over at Brewster High School. We, we know from a few presentations from Deputy Kraski in particular, that we're shifting toward making sure that if we in fact, you know, have to, if for some reason, obviously no one wants this to happen, and we pray it doesn't, that an active shooter gains access to a building, that in spite of all of our efforts to keep bad people out, one gets in. And certainly at the secondary level, as Deputy Kraski presented, we're devoting more attention to once and if an active shooter gains access to a building. Our students and our teachers have to be able to be safe in their classrooms, and they have to be able to push furniture in front of classrooms, or bar doors, or, you know, throw things at the intruder so that they get enough time to get out. And that's training that, you know, a secondary student in here at Wells or at the high school can do, but our little people can't do those things. And if we are worried about that, we have to make sure that we have an SRO at CD Star to ensure that we have someone who's, you know, who's actively involved and actively trained to be able to intervene in ways that we know that our SROs are trained to do. And as I said, I'm not minimizing the work of the SPO, but obviously there's a, there's a need to make sure that we have the greatest level of security and safety at barricade to five level because they cannot bar doors, they cannot do things that our secondary students do. And we have to make sure we protect them in the event an active shooter gains access to a building. The SPO model is being used around in other districts. They're combining actually SPOs and SROs. And as you know, we certainly do, we could benefit from having an SPO at the high school, someone who can go around and monitor and be active on the floors. Our students have reported, as you've seen in our bare facts, some activities that are happening in the bathrooms. And having an SPO on those floors, monitoring and walking around, I think will help to mitigate some of those activities. In terms of contractual, employee benefits.
So as we discussed at our Budget 101, salaries and benefits, part of the collective bargaining agreements across the district requires the district to pay retirees for their accumulated sick time. We've traditionally recorded those payments in the instruction code. However, it's more appropriate that we, that we make those payments under employee benefits. So we've reclassified that code from instruction to a separate line in employee benefits, which makes it more transparent and easier to identify. Again, these are required payments that are subject to collective bargaining with each of the different bargaining units and also the individual employment contracts of individuals throughout the district. So we're reclassifying that to employee benefits, and you'll see that as a standalone budget item. BOSI services, we have residency investigations, money that we're setting aside for a private investigator to form surveillance and database searches. So in total, our unallocated instruction is reducing. And the main reason for that is the reallocation of the retired companions to employee benefits.
The next part of the budget development process will be the budget managers who are reviewing any increased staffing requests that they have. And as was mentioned earlier, the reason why these can be funded is because of the new commercial properties in the Agonquin pipeline that has been added to the tax rolls. And without those, the requests that you're about to hear would not be possible. That would be actually Victor and me again. As you know, we have a district registrar, and we've had a district registrar in place since December of 2017. And that was in response to the challenges that we saw across the district with regards to different, having different registrars in each building. So we want to make sure that we maintain that, that service and work and certainly that the work that Donna Maury's doing now. We've learned from the work that our current residency officer is doing is that that work is ongoing, and we're proposing that we add a supervisor registration of residency so that that work continues, that, and that that person is functioning at a point-six level, so it's not a full-time position, but it is a position that is necessary. We have about a thousand students who have, who live in properties with their leases, and those leases have to be monitored, and we have to check the expiration of those leases to make sure that if their lease expires, that that family is contacted and they have to provide an updated lease, or we have to then move forward on, on various levels of making sure that the family is, you know, is no longer registered in the district, if they no longer have residency. And that is an operation that is ongoing. We don't want to lose, lose any ground from the work that has taken place. And there's a lot of work that's gone into it. You've been at the various residency task force meetings. So the only way to maintain the level and to continue to monitor and watch this area very closely is to assign a supervisor that is, that oversees residency as well as registration.
So new to this year, we appointed a dispatcher earlier in the year through the shuffling of positions over to the transportation department. It was necessary that we included a dispatcher so that we have redundant coverage that overlaps during shifts. We're proposing for 1920, the addition of an additional maintenance employee in the facilities department. And, you know, the main reason for this is there's a lot of work that needs to take place during school hours, and it's not always feasible to perform some of this work during school hours. So we're proposing an additional maintenance employee that would help us throughout the day and into the evening for maintenance of the fields specifically, as well as other, you know, operations within the school. within the school building. Another position that actually doesn't affect the general fund budget, but we're presenting it just in full transparency, it affects the school lunch fund, which is a self-sustaining fund totally separate from the general fund budget. But as part of the Chezanne recommendation, it was recommended that we develop an Assistant Child Nutrition Director, one with culinary experience that will help us in completing the initiative of the Chezanne Foundation that we're now in completing year two of. So in total, the addition of wide staffing for 1920, we've got mid-year increases of 2.0, proposed requests for 1920 of 1.6, for a total addition of 3.6 positions.
So JFK, we'd like to thank the Board for bringing the school counselor position in here. We are in the final stages of that search, and we hope to bring someone to the Board within the next month or so to really add another level of expertise in meeting the mental health needs of our children. And as I was stating earlier, we're not just talking about children with special needs, we're talking about all children. And many of our students are going through crises and trauma throughout their lives at a very younger age. You know, we used to just not even label these things in the past, but now we know a lot more about psychology, and our children really benefit from someone meeting their needs on a social, emotional level.
I would like to piggyback again on that and also thank all of you for the three additional teacher aides. Really, words don't describe the additional support and what Dr. Zamblin was just sharing. The way they intervene and support the children, again, there's just not words. We should come in and walk the building on a daily basis and just see the kind of work that they do. So again, just to reiterate, sorry for repeating it, but just an extra thanks.
So one of the things, and this is a K5 piece, over the last four years, we've been implementing the Columbia University's Reading and Writing Project, or Teachers College. And last year, we had a Dr. Linda Kay, representative of TC, come in and start to work with us. And one of the things she said, she noted, was that Brewster has built one of the strongest foundations for the Reading and Writing Project that she has ever seen, and she's been around for a long time, and one of the initial people at Anellas County going back many years with the reading and writing and intervention services. So a compliment from her is a testament to Brewster and Brewster teachers for all that they have done to build a strong foundation for ELA for our children. Now, how does that relate to math? Part of that is that we had a lot of support from TC working with our teachers in building the reading and writing program. We had staff development working with our teachers over ten days during the year. We had a lot of PLC time where the teachers would collaborate and work together to strengthen that program. Now we are at the initial stage of implementing a new math program going into next year. So part of the conversation we've been having is how do we create that structure for support for our teachers in the classrooms, for the students, but do that kind of work in-house? So Michelle and I have been having conversations.
And this is really, I mean, we're here pretending this is on behalf of our K5 math study team, which is made up of teachers and administrators across the two schools. Like you'll see on the JFK and the CD Star staffing request slide is 0.5 for each building of math specialists slash math coach. And what, as Dr. Zamblin said, you know, you know that we're in the process of piloting two math curricular resources this year, we're in the process of evaluating those resources now as a group. And what we're proposing is the addition of this position in order to help us implement this program with fidelity. One of the teachers described it as a teacher giving other teachers tools in order to implement this program. So little systematic logistical aspects of it, especially as we get it off the ground. But really, we envision this position as, and I say we, as part of the K5 math study team, as someone who co-teaches, who co-plans, who really, I mean, there's going to need to be additional professional learning from whatever curricular resource we select because that is more specific to that resource. But what we're talking about is ongoing professional learning and support in terms of pedagogy, how it's implemented in the classroom, how we identify and prioritize mathematical practices and thinking in our curriculum instruction and assessment. So moving forward to improve coherence and alignment, K5, this is a recommendation of the math study team. I did tell them, we just met this afternoon, that I would also like to convey from them that they would love some additional math support, K5, which I shared with them, that we would intend to do with our title grants and any other funding, any funding that we have.
Okay, so at CD Star for staffing, as Dr. Zamblin stated, who's a student at the high school, will fulfill the state mandate for students to have access to a school counselor in the elementary schools. As Dr. Henry Piedmont stated, the school resource officer, we're very lucky to have our school patrol officer this year, but we would like to increase these to a school resource officer so that not only will they provide a more protection for our students and staff, but also will be able to go into classrooms and provide programs and presentations to our students. We, as Ms. Dash stated, the K5 math specialist, we will be sharing with JFK.
Our teacher aide is to better support our students in the classroom and to help out our teacher as well. And the computer operations aide is an increase for our attendance monitor. We're finding that we need to have a full-time person on hand to really help facilitate our needs and data management with that aspect of our building.
Mine is nice and short. So we're asking for one additional T-Sol certified teacher. We are not meeting the mandates that we are, that we need to mandate by the state regulations. So it's been very difficult for our teachers. They do the best that they can to support the students, but it's a very difficult task to do that. It's one thing to be able to meet the requirements, which we're not actually doing, but it's another thing to be able to meet the requirements and actually teach them science or teach them math. So the more that we can support our teachers so that they can teach these subjects, the better off, the better off our students will be.
So to piggyback on what Mr. Clark was just saying, at the high school, we have quickly growing EAL population. The majority of our students are SCIF students, which is students with an informal interrupted education, and that's a large portion of our students. We have a very short window to get them to graduation, and it's a struggle, it's a struggle for them when they're coming up at ages of seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and they need to get, they need to pass five regencies, and they need to pass all their classes to graduate. So with that in mind, we're asking for a T-Sol certified teacher, an additional T-Sol certified teacher. And we're also asking for a science teacher to be bilingual in Spanish and also have science certification, so they would actually teach the science classes, particularly biology, so they could pass the living and dying regions in their native language. It's one of the regencies that our students can take in their native language, and currently we're teaching it in English, then they have to take the test in Spanish, and they have to translate it, and it's a challenging proposition for the students. So we're asking for those two positions. Our role language position was a position cut. Last year was, we actually didn't hire back one of our retirees, and it really ballooned some of our Spanish higher-level classes, particularly the heritage Spanish classes. So we are asking for a duly certified non-language teacher, particularly Italian and Spanish. And then we are asking for two full-time science teachers. With the additional two full-time science teachers, we will be able to have every other day lab classes added back to every single science course with the exception of science lectures. So that's, that's been, currently, right now, we have nine point eight science teachers. With this plus the additional EAL person, we will be at twelve point eight. So we'd be able to do that. We also are asking for a point five school monitor position, which currently is going to be in place. It's for that two-thirty to six o'clock time period where we have a lot of sports, a lot of activities, and we're just needing a little extra supervision, so.
Oh, yes, for the, in terms of the security control officer, there's one other component. As you know, Brewster High School is a polling area, and you also know the governor allowed pedophiles to vote who are released from jail, and they're supposed to report to an officer and be allowed to come in to vote. That may not happen, and that's an exposure to our children. We have lots of programs to occur at the end of the day, and we want to make sure that no one gains access to our buildings and our children don't come across people who aim to harm them. So that's another reason to have a school patrol officer in addition to what I mentioned earlier. There's obviously lots of advocacy at the state level to move voting out of public schools, but there's not been a lot of good alternatives with regards to where those polling locations would occur. So until that happens, Brewster High School is a polling area, many more people gain access to Brewster High School, and we don't want one of those people going where they should go.
Okay, so for PPS, first, what I will note is that there have been adjustments made during this current year for which we are very grateful to the Board of Education for your support with. These additional positions have allowed for us to create more than just one section included of our life skills classes at both CD Star and also at Brewster High School and also at JFK. And this has really just been a tremendous support to our students with significant special needs because it has allowed for, basically just for more specialized instruction to really help promote independence and help students to, you know, better, make better progress during the course of the school year. So we are grateful for that, and also throughout this year, the Board has also approved, it's on the next slide, a 1.0 school psychologist and also CSE chairperson to assist with the needs that we have particularly at the K through eight level with testing and also with chairing CSE meetings. And we are currently in the process of searching for the ideal candidate to present to the Board for this position, and also the behavior analyst, which is a position that was also approved during this year. And one of the primary goals with this position again is to help students be successful in their home district programs and to also allow us to build capacity within district. That way, we are less compelled in the future to need to look at add district programs, which not only takes students away from their home schools, but it's also costing the district. Also at this, during this year, we have added a 0.5 school nurse, and that is funded through our IDEA grant, and that individual will be very helpful with meeting the needs at both CD Star Elementary School and also JFK. And I will just go back, that as we increased the sections for the classes, including the life skills classes that we have across district, along with that, we have needed to provide support to that class, those classes with also teaching assistants and also, as I mentioned earlier, a specialty teaching teacher for each. So in, at JFK, there's been an increase of two teaching assistants. Again, those are funded by the federal grant as well as the teaching assistant at Wells. So we are able to fund some of these positions through the IDEA 611 grant, and other positions are accounted for within the proposed budget.
For PE Health and Athletics, we're just going to continue to ask for the assistance to the Director of PE Athletics and Health. We are in the process of analyzing this position and look forward to all the great things that a person can do to help us with the new initiatives of mental health in particular.
So in terms of the summary of all the staffing requests, instructional staffing requests, total FTE that we're proposing is 21.6 positions or FTE full-time equivalents. In terms of the non-instructional staff, district-wide, the summary of those that included the residency supervisor as well as the staff associated with JFK and the other buildings and PPS and athletics, and that's a total of 8.5 FTE of non-instructional staff. That's, that's part of what we heard from the budget managers. The next, the next part of this budget will entail a review of class size and enrollment, which is really important. We subscribe to a service that helps us to look at projections over time of, you know, above births, of live births, and then how those children, and their transition to our system, and where we see increases in class sizes, which then helps us to make decisions about staffing and so forth. And so the budget managers or the building administrators will come up and talk about their class sizes.
Thank you. So over the last few years, as we've seen, the projections for enrollment in our district have been decreasing. Over the last few years, actually, we've been fairly steady. At JFK, with nine sections per grade level. So we have nine sections, and our class sizes are roughly around 21, 22 students throughout the building.
So for kindergarten, as you've seen on the screen, currently add, as soon as I'm looking, I'm trying to see at the same time. So for kindergarten, we currently have registration packets that have been picked up, are at 165 students. That's on projection for what we usually end up with for the coming year for students. Of course, the rest will filter in during the summertime, and we usually range somewhere between 175 and 190 students coming to the track.
What that means is that as of February 15th, we have 165 registration packets picked up, which is pretty typical. And next week is our kindergarten registration, where a lot of families come in and register their children, and we do see usually an increase of about 30 kids at that time, and we have filtering in over the summer. Now, again, we've had anomalies over the years where kindergarten has increased or our grade level has increased, it just happens, so we are prepared for that. But right now, the numbers show that we are steady at a projection of nine sections with approximately just under 200 students per grade level.
So at CD Star, you can see that the number of sections has, will remain the same from this year to next. The average class size this year is around 24. Next year, the decision was made to move our attempt section to third grade from fifth grade to better support our youngest students transitioning from JFK into a smaller, larger environment.
So our numbers are pretty consistent this year. I think we're adding a net of three students this year. So we're going from 23.5 So we're going from 23.5 in English to 23.6. There are two additional sections in English, 29, as opposed to the other core areas, which have 27, and that's how we can provide additional support for kids who are struggling with reading and writing. You also notice an increase in our oral language from 15 to 18 sections, and the reason for that is this year, due to a larger sixth grade and a smaller seventh grade, we loaned three teachers to the high school for the year, and with their additional 1.0, we're going to be getting those three sections back, so that will be able to help us decrease our oral language classes.
So with the high school, it's a little more difficult to imagine because it doesn't work on, on average. What we end up with, particularly when you're looking at oral language, you know, we have two languages. Italian alone has five different levels of Italian. Spanish has five different levels plus a super class, so, and then two heritage classes. So what ends up happening is there might be a small number who are taking a super Spanish class or WCC Italian class, but then there's a larger number of Italian II students. So some of the sections, depending on the level, are larger than others, so it's not a pure average. It's not like you can say, okay, we have 10 sections of Italian, and we have 600 students going into it, and you have an even average. It just doesn't work like that. It's closer to being accurate when you're looking at the social studies numbers or the English numbers, but what's factored into here is the English classes next year, particularly for ninth grade, we're hoping to do a lab opposite the science lab, so we're hoping to do an every other day writing lab because what we found with our Regent's classes is students across the board just struggle with writing. So by adding that additional day, we're hoping that they increase their writing skills. So, so that's what I hope to say.
Okay, Victor Malagra. Again, there are unknown variables, and we, we want to continue to emphasize those things because they do have a major impact on our budget from year to year. As Victor mentioned, we don't know what our final state aid allocation is going to be in April. We'll have final, we'll have final numbers. So what we're proposing now, we hope will actually come to fruition in terms of what we actually receive from, from the state. We also know that, that the governor has been going around the district with the controller, you know, talking about, you know, the potential for there to be less, which frightens us. But again, we have no control over that. Actual enrollment is also factors, you know, families moving in, moving in and out of the district all over the summer, and that happened, that's a phenomenon that happens across many districts. So what we think of, what we have projected on the basis of actual children change over the course of the summer between now and September, and certainly that could trigger the need for us to add another teacher, to split a class, et cetera. English as a new language learner classifications is also a very challenging number to get a handle on. Again, if we have changes that occur with the summer, families that, and then, as a spoiler to mention, if we, if we happen to get children at the high school level who are 17, 18, 19 years old, as an ENL student, they're allowed to be educated until the age of 21, we have to make adjustments in terms of where those children are placed. They can't just go into ninth grade if that's the first time in high school. So we don't have the luxury of being able to plug children into prescribed traditional settings. So that, that's a number that really does make us spend a lot of time rethinking how we're organizing the learning environment for, for those youngsters. We often, that could impact, you know, the other three schools, but it has a greater impact at the high school level because we obviously can't put a 17-year-old in the middle school if they have, have had the equivalent of education that would, you know, be eighth grade. So that certainly limits our ability to make those changes. In terms of special education classifications, as we go into the end of review season, lots of decisions will be made that will impact decisions that currently have in place in terms of where students are. There could be some adjustments, and they frequently are. And as both Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Sulu mentioned, we are committed to making sure that we place children in a least restrictive learning environment so that they spend time with their grade level peers and that they're not in segregated environments, but that also requires that we provide the supports for those children and that we also bring children back to the school district so that they are being educated in the district and that we, at the, we certainly do save on, sometimes we save, but, you know, when we bring children back, we also need to make sure we provide the assistance to so that those children are successful. We also, I'll turn this over to Victor, these last two, sorry.
So what we, of course, we don't know is our anticipated expenditures. As I mentioned earlier, we had some anticipated expenditures this year with regard to retroactive tuition billing from, as a result of the rate setting unit. What we also don't know is our year-end fund balance. We usually begin our projections around this time. What we project for the property tax report card is a requirement that we project as of March 31st, and that's the number that we use in our budget statement. So those are the things that are unknown at this point in time. Fortunately, we are anticipating a surplus in our fund balance, so that is a fortunate position for us to be in at this point in time in this year. But again, with the, the unknown, it's still really too early to project that number with any certainty. So some important dates to remember, and I thank you all for your attention this evening. I understand it was a very long presentation, but as Ms. Masek mentioned earlier, we're playing catch-up from the February 12th Board meeting that got postponed due to weather. So important dates to remember. I'll just highlight the next several Board meetings, March 12th, March 26th, April 9th, April 23rd is budget adoption, so that's a very important meeting. The budget hearing is May 14th, and then the budget vote, trust election is May 21st. Please come out to vote, I heard your friends, relatives, or everybody know. Newly this year is a budget advisory committee to be established to help, again, transmit messages of things that people are learning at our Budget 101s and our budget presentations to help to get the word out to the community because, as you can tell from all of the content that we covered, there's a lot to know about a school budget to make an important vote on May 21st. So again, I'm encouraging you to let your friends and relatives know. Please refer to that Budget 101 website that Dr. Henning mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. There's a lot of important material on there. It's not that long, you can watch it at your leisure or not watch it at all, but look at the slide deck. But there's a lot of important information that will give you much greater perspective on the budget process. So again, visit our website, and I think it's very kind of significant.
As we mentioned earlier, the budget newsletter will also be provided, and what you'll see in the budget newsletter as a result of some examples that Victor provided, we want, we want to make sure that we focus a great deal on basically what you heard from budget managers earlier, you know, how the budget impacts the life of children and the ways in which we are providing the resources to ensure their success. So you'll see a lot of stories, you'll see a lot of connections to all the dollars that are associated with this budget that we present to you for the 1920 school year. We also encourage those of you who did not participate, as Mr. Carlson mentioned, that we encourage you to reference Budget 101 materials, which happen, which help to unpack, just, you know, how we actually came up with these decisions and the kinds of things that we have control over and that we don't, because that will help those who might look at the number and might draw different conclusions, but the Budget 101 materials will help to provide that backstory, which is very helpful. In addition, we certainly will be doing a lot of work to make sure that we communicate what the 4.06 tax cap means because we don't want the public to think that that is an increase to their taxes. We want the public to understand that that is a good thing, so there will be a number of ways in which we, we transmit that information, which will include short videos, what we call budget minutes, where different people in the district, you'll hear different voices and you see different videos, and people explain that concept, and we'll transfer information much sooner rather than waiting to the month of May to promote that information. So that, again, everyone, you know, goes to vote, to vote on the budget fully informed and not confused about what some of the numbers may mean and in the direction in which the tax cap is gone, it does not mean that one's own tax bill is increasing to, you know, to account for an additional revenue. So again, thank you for your patience in hearing all the details, and I thank the budget managers, the administrators for being here to present and share their role in decisions in terms of developing the budgets. And thank Mr. Carlson, he spent a lot of time last week working on the budget and making sure that all the material is here and that we do our best job of presenting what's occurring and with the greatest level of transparency. And I thank the Board in advance for your consideration for all that we proposed.
Thank you, Valerie. I, the Board may have some questions, we didn't want to, we kind of wanted you to not lose your momentum, so just in case, I do want to offer just a little time if the Board has some questions, but also is going to ask the Board if possibly we could make a motion, or if I could get, you know, a motion in a second and then a vote to see if you want to do this, just amend the agenda to also at this time possibly allow any public comment specific to this. So, you know, you don't have to, we can just wait till the end, otherwise this gets fresh in everyone's mind, but at least the Board, I want to ask, have their questions first.
Is there any more questions, or do you want?
I can make a motion if anyone wants to, would like to do that. But again, if the Board doesn't feel that that's, we can do that at the end.
I'm fine with that.
No question. Okay, so any motion?
All my questions.
And then Diana seconded it? All those in favor of allowing some public comment? Okay, so, seven, zero, digit, I said zero, thank you. Okay, so first we'll do is just Board comments or questions about the presentation. Obviously, there will be more presentations coming up, and I have actually a first question. Victor, with the budget advisory committee meetings, because the Board meetings are, we're restricted in how we can have a dialogue with the community, so I just want it to be very clear for the public that there is space and opportunity to engage in more dialogue. I know the advisory committee meetings are specific to members who've signed up to be part of that. Is there opportunity perhaps before the meeting or even at that meeting for it to be open to the public? So it's not just so we can, because this way, I think if we can advertise that there's, that's the opportunity to come and have that dialogue, specific for budget season, and, you know, maybe these next two, you know, they're already on the calendar.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, they're going to be obviously focuses of the budget advisory committee, but that, you know, current budget development is certainly going to be the main focus of the upcoming next three meetings. The other focus of the budget advisory committee, or the other two focuses, one, increasing transparency in the level of detail in our reporting. Obviously, New York State has a prescribed format that we follow. However, in addition to that, with the Every Student Succeeds Act, as Dr. Henning mentioned, it requires actually more fiscal transparency in our reporting, which we're going to use the budget advisory committee to assist us in reporting that information, the types of information that they're looking for. And then finally, getting the word out, because this year, the unique to this year is the tax cap increase, that's over 4%, that's unheard of in Brewster, it's not unheard of in, you know, statewide, but we're going to need the assistance of the budget advisory committee to get out there to, you know, let their friends, relatives, neighbors know what's going on, but absolutely, you know, to engage in, you know, current development and explanation of, you know, different parts of the budget, of course, would be part of the budget advisory committee as well.
So, but that's specific to that group, Kate?
Well, it's all, I mean, it could be open to the public, you know, the first portion of it, if you prefer, and I believe.
I think it would be good to have it and really advertise that, get that word out so that the public understands that that's the opportunity to come and have a dialogue with regards to the budget and the presentation, because we can't do that at the Board meeting. So, you know, if it's the first 30 minutes or so, if no one's there, we just proceed with the committee work. Okay.
Is there, can I, can I follow up with that? Is there a way, Victor, that people can find out who's actually on the budget committee? Can we put something out that way, the public knows who to turn to? You know, is my neighbor on the committee? Do I have a friend who's on the committee? Because I think a lot of people would like to ask questions of just the general community members, the parents that are on there. Are we allowed to?
Yeah, we could, we could post the committee members to the, to the budget website.
That might be helpful for people.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so questions from the Board regarding the presentation? There was a lot, and there'll be more to come.
I just have one question on the, you know, I guess $3 million increase in revenue. Is any part of that, is it allowable that it be, you know, put into the unallocated, you know, savings account? Is that, you know, can you do that? Can you take some of it? You have to use it.
No, correct. Yeah, you, you have to, you have to build a balanced budget. What we know is, on the expenditure side of the budget, we're not going to spend the entire budget. It's illegal to over expend the budget, and it's recommended by the Controller's office that you include contingency. The way our budget's constructed is we use our appropriated fund balance as kind of the revenue complement of contingency so that we have a balanced budget. Our expectation is that we're going to spend 1.5 million less than our expenditure budget shows, and then on the revenue side of that is a revenue shortfall of, again, 1.5 million in the form of appropriated fund balance. But, you know, a district can't, you know, actively or, you know, purposefully create a fund balance or create a surplus. It happens, oftentimes it happens just as a result of, you know, positive budget variances and things of that nature, but to purposely, you know, build fund balance, you know, of course, the Controller would gravitate on that.
And Victor, just one more question. I know you had mentioned in one of the earlier slides that TRS tends to fluctuate, it goes up, it goes down on what our contributions are. We are not allowed by law to save any money to pay off our future increases, correct?
Correct, and that is one of the biggest frustrations of school districts throughout the state because the TRS has a devastating impact on a budget, or a year like 1920, it has an incredibly, you know, beneficial impact on the budget where we're going to see, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of cost avoidance, money that we're no longer required to send to Albany. But with that comes, you know, the bad years like last year, and another bad year which is coming, you know, two years from now. It's a certainty, and I embedded the link to the TRS bulletin where they, and I quoted them, where they said, you know, tepid investment results are going to result in higher contribution rates. So it's a certainty that in 2020, we're going to have another TRS spike. It would be, it would be extremely beneficial to school districts if we could set aside a reserve to protect ourselves from that, but no such mechanism exists, and as Dr. Henning mentioned, it's been, you know, lobbied for at least the past decade, but again, the Governor doesn't seem to be willing to approve it.
He doesn't believe that districts need a reserve for TRS. Our Governor believes that districts have money that they can use to cover this, and that, that's what we learned from Chris from Questar, who was our last guest speaker, who helped, who works with districts across the state to help them to understand their state aid allocations because of, you know, the complexities of the formula. And he mentioned that that is, you know, the, the, our Governor does not believe that that's something that we, that districts need to do.
But it's also something we've been proposing every?
Every year.
Every year, and every assembly meeting we've met, and every Senator we've met, is, that's the first thing we start talking about, other than foundation aid, state aid, and all that, but that, that's on that list because it's making it very difficult for Victor and for the rest of us to try to keep up.
Just two comments that I had, and you mentioned this, the distinction between, because everyone has, you know, line item for textbooks, digital and or paper, and you did make the comment that there, one, isn't necessarily cheaper than whether it depends on the situation, so, because that was going to be a question, but since you mentioned it, I just want to say that that was a question, that are we making sure we're checking out the most, you know, cost-effective way to approach those two options? So thank you. And then the other thing was, obviously, to comment on science and that there have been, or there are, there is a recommendation for quite a few teachers, and I think it's needed. The one thing that, of course, I'm looking at, I was, as I was going through it, I'm One thing that of course I'm looking at, I was, as I was going through it, I'm making notes, okay, well, we need this, we need this. And I thought, okay, well, if we can have a strategy that, you know, and I know these conversations are going on, that there's a focus this year clearly on the greatest need, if that's what it is, you know, and then let's look at, you know, each year, and I know, again, you're doing this, but, you know, let's think ahead and plan, so where will our focus go to so we make sure that we can address, because there are, you know, even from losses we've had over the years to build up the different programs we have. So, so I'm looking at it going, well, yeah, I guess we'll have to trade off here and there. So I see how we get to this place. But yeah, I think that it'd be great to at some point maybe have a presentation on what that vision is and how that plan is. You probably have this plan, you know, over the next five years or the next, next year and the year after. Just those two comments. So, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question about the .6 supervisor of registration and residency. Is that in addition to the residency officer?
That we would convert the officer to those dual functions of registration and residency.
Okay. And then I have one other question about the .5 nurse from PPS. Is that, obviously, that's in addition to a school nurse that's already at a school?
Exactly.
And is that to be dedicated to special needs, not nurse or just additional?
Could you speak to that, Liz?
So the volume of students that go into the nurse's office of both CD-Star and also JFK is quite high. And at the secondary level at Bell's and also the high school, there are two nurses that cover the building. So this person is there to assist with the needs at both CD-Star and also JFK. There are some students with special needs who also have medical conditions due to which this support is additionally needed. But basically, the support is there for all students at both JFK and also the CD-Star in addition to the nurses that we have, and also to meet the needs of some students with medical needs. Thank you.
And did you say, Liz, does that come, would that come from grant money?
Yes.
Or is that, okay.
Yes, we'll do the regulars.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so at this time, just a reminder that there will be more, there'll be the open forums and the dialogues that we'll make sure we get out there for the public to come. But for right now, if anyone here does have a comment that they'd like to make on the presentation, I'd like to give the opportunity to come up and do so. If not, we'll move on. Nope. Okay. So then we move on to our next presentation, which is the retirement incentive considerations for AAB and BTA bargaining units.
Every year, certainly for the last number of years, we have tried to incentivize employees who are ready to retire and might be inclined to retire sooner than their planned date by engaging in a memorandum of agreement between the two bargaining units, the AAB and the BTA, to incentivize those educators to retire sooner. Not because we want to get rid of them, but it's because it's a way for us to manage cost, employee cost over time. As you, as we mentioned earlier, employment is one of the zero-based budgeting areas that is really a great example of how we don't replace a teacher who's retiring at, let's say, $130,000 with another $130,000 teacher. We look at, again, the pool of teachers, we look at certifications, we look at experience, and we look to bring in obviously the most, the most highly qualified, effective teacher possible, but we certainly don't want to pay that teacher the same amount that the teacher who retired was, was paid. So that's what an incentive would allow us to do is to incentivize some of our more highly paid employees to retire sooner and replace them with employees who are highly effective, but because they enter the profession, they're at the very early stages of their career, they are not going to be on the high levels of the salary schedule for the AAB or the BTA. So what we've provided is examples of past incentives, cover the 2010 school year, which was an example of an MOA and incentive for the BTA. And we also have an example of the MOA for both the AAB and the BTA for the 2018 school year. And we typically focus on both of those bargaining units, obviously because they both have highly paid employees who may be inclined to accept an incentive to retire early. We typically start at looking at, obviously, if that person is of age to retire, and that would be something that they would have to pay attention to as per TRS, because then that would impact their benefits from TRS if they retire too early, and would lower those benefits. We also look at those employees who have been employed in the district for 20 years as a starting point. There are various examples of how much, you know, what the amount of that incentive is, it varies. As you see, there's a big difference between the 2010 BTA incentive and the 2018 AAB and BTA incentive. We would, we propose, we'd like to propose to the board that we engage in negotiation with both the AAB and the BTA to come up with a retirement incentive for those employees who have not submitted any intent to retire. We do have employees who have submitted intents to retire, but this is a retirement incentive for those who have not. So we are not even proposing that those folks who have already indicated that they are going to retire at the end of the school year would be eligible for the retirement incentive. We will, we're proposing, you know, sort of something close to, you know, 1,500 to maybe, you know, 2,500 for every year up to, we've done in the past 30 years, I believe, Mr. Carlson was probably the example in the 2018 examples. So we're, we, this has to be bargained, this has to be negotiated, this is not a decision that can be made without the bargaining units, involvement and collaboration in creating those incentives. So we're asking permission from you to engage in conversations to negotiate retirement incentives for the AAB and the BTA.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. Now we move on to our Brewster High School Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Program. Ms. Holder, Ms. Sullivan, Dr. Young, students.
It is a mandate in New York State. We had it in Brewster and East Village, and Vera Lodge is going to speak to that since 2015. But it is something that we feel very passionate about. It starts, there's three levels of PBIS. Universal, which is positive behavioral supports for everyone, and that's generally our focus as a building. There are secondary and tertiary. So secondary supports are small groups, we might have small groups, we might meet with 15 students, a dozen students at a time, whole amount of class, push it into class, doing things like that. But for us, the universal supports are things we can do as building-wide. And we have small assemblies, large assemblies, and things that are the focus of the year. Overall, one of the things that we feel passionate about is Brewster Cares. So that came up out of the 2015, 2016 school year, and it stands for compassionate, accountable, ready to learn, engaged, and safe. And those posters are throughout the building, and we have awards that are given out on a monthly basis to students who exemplify Brewster Cares.
So one of the driving factors of our PBIS theme this year is the New York State Mental Health Education Law. This law, along with the climate survey, our PBIS team and our work with Democratic Congress, has driven that our theme this year for PBIS is centered around health and wellness. And this particular law, schools are advised to develop a literacy component to health and wellness or mental health. And what that does basically is teaching students to understand how to maintain and obtain overall health, to decrease stigma that are associated with mental health, also enhancing the help-seeking efficacy component and understanding disorders and treatment. So in Brewster High School, we have a full-time mental health counselor, Mrs. Erin Alvarez, who has been doing a tremendous job. She's our advisor of our Mental Health Alliance Club. We also have a speaker coming in, in April, Lydia Woodard from the Mental Health Association of New York State. She's going to actually speak at a faculty meeting to our faculty and also facilitate student assemblies to our students during that same week in April. And Mrs. Alvarez and our health teacher, one of our health teachers, Mrs. Rebecca Archer, were asked to participate on the panel next week at a regional summit. And Lydia Woodard has asked both of them to do this because she has observed that Brewster High School has really developed and initiated initiatives and is very, very much ahead of the curve in the mental health awareness piece of schools. So this mental health component is really one of the driving factors of our PBIS or our positive supports in Brewster High School.
I'm Henrietta Lodge, I'm one of the social workers, Erin Alvarez being the other social worker and mental health counselor at the high school. I've been involved with the high school PBIS committee since it used to be called RTI. And it's all been a part of recognizing that kids, in addition to learning, reading, writing, and arithmetic, they also have to learn about social emotional skills, mental health skills, and, and relationship skills. So as I said, I've been on PBIS since it began in the 15, 16 school year, which that year we met regularly and we established what does, what are the basic positive messages we want to happen at the high school? And that's when we came up with Brewster High School Cares, which is, as Nikki said, compassion, accountability, being ready to learn, being engaged in the process, and also being safe and not only physically safe, but emotionally safe as well. Since then, on the universal tier level, because as, it's similar to RTI, there's three different tiers, the universal one being the one where we're trying to bring in assemblies to help the kids. The first year, we did have rotating workshops at the beginning of the year where we talked with the kids about what does compassion, accountability, being ready to learn and engaged and safe look like in the cafeteria, what does it look like in the, in the hallways and in the class, and as well as in the classrooms? That's when we started to bring in different assemblies, including EJ Carion, Believe in Yourself and Your Potential. And these assemblies were kind of researched by members of the PBIS team. Since then, we've also had assemblies, High School Matters, more about relationships with Dr. Mike Follen, you know, you don't really know me, get a chance to get to know me, was that message? Mark Sterner came to talk about the drug driving. We also that year had student-led conventions through the Democratic Congress. And this year, we've had Brian Williams come to talk about kindness. And then we had the One Love Foundation, which we, which is the assembly that I think that kind of caused the reason why we're actually here in the first place, and we'll talk about that some more. We've also had, we've also had the ninth graders met at the, yeah, the, oh, the PLC assemblies for ninth graders during PLC Fridays, we did have assemblies, or have assemblies for ninth grade students. The last one we had was about connections. Have you made connections with adults in the building? And we did a survey on the ninth grade. So, and there, as Nikki mentioned, there's ongoing monthly cares award certificates. So just to let you know, the One Love presentation, which happened, the One Love Foundation was established, I'm thinking about 19, 2010, I mean, a high school, not high school, a graduate of, or an almost graduate of the University of Virginia named Dearglee Love was actually murdered by an ex-boyfriend three weeks before her college graduation. Her mother, Sharon Love, decided to form a foundation in order to raise awareness throughout the country to educate people about healthy and unhealthy relationships. As, and as I said, this has been countrywide. I first became aware of the One Love Foundation through our regional social work meeting at Patton North Westminster Bosse's that I attend. A person came and did a presentation there and, you know, offered to schools that we could bring in people from the One Love Foundation to give, to, as I said, raise awareness about healthy and unhealthy relationships. Because as, as is written, you know, one in three females and one in four males will experience unhealthy relationships in their lifetime. And 16 to 24-year-olds are at much greater risk for this. And certainly, as a school social worker, and I know my colleagues in, in the counseling department, a lot of conversations we had with young people are about relationships. What are they getting themselves into? Is this really love? Is this not love? You know, my boyfriend is checking my phone all the time, do you think that's okay? You know, so they're really experiencing questions about their relationships that they're getting into. So the assembly presented 10 signs of healthy and unhealthy relationships through short videos and discussions. So this assembly and also the student-led follow-up provided kids time and a space to really begin to talk about all of this. Now, as you know, there were, the assembly had some issues with it, just to be frank. Some of the kids, a small group of kids, were quite disrespectful and towards the presentate, towards the presenter, as well as not taking the subject seriously. And of course, you know, you kind of wonder what's going on. And as it, as it turns out, it's a subject that hit home with a lot of people. And different people, when they are experiencing reactions, sometimes take negative reactions when the subject hits close to home. I'm not saying all the kids that were disruptive have bad situations at home or have experienced them, but it's a possibility that they did. And they could have just been teenagers, too. So the assembly ended, and some, a group led by Tim, one of our really good kids at the high school wanted to do something about it. So Tim, take it away.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tim Prednich, senior at Brewster High School. So the assembly kind of started as Miss Lodge described, behavioral blah 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 didn't really go as planned as it should have. It really kind of touched, because it was such a sensitive topic that I guess no one really sheds light on, so it really touched me, and I saw that it touched many others. And we were kind of disappointed in our, you know, fellow peers that kind of took such a, you know, such a sensitive topic and really brought it down and really didn't look at it, you know, as, like, a certain way they should have. So I was kind of moved by two So I was kind of moved by two teachers in particular, Mr. Riley and Mr. Vazada, to actually take action and, you know, take a step forward and actually do something to actually address the topic. And on my way down to the main office, ran into Miss Wardler leaving the nurse's office, actually, and I had a walk with her and asked her, you know, we could do anything? Well, can we do, can we do something that's like student, like collaborating, like students collaborating with teachers and administration to actually do something? And she let me do it. She gave me a day and a half, and I was able to organize, I guess, a bunch of teachers, a bunch of fellows, fellow peers in line in the junior and senior class. And we were able to put an assembly together between periods two through four. And we were able to take the topic and really just kind of open it up to everybody and talk about just certain things that kind of, you know, just talk about certain topics and just really take the topic and, you know, take what had happened a couple days before and really just kind of make it really what happened, like what we really wanted to achieve with the initial presentation. And I think what we did, you know, what we were able to do, me and my fellow peers and the different teachers that had come up with us, was really great. I think it really kind of helped a lot of us, and I had gotten a lot of positive feedback from other people that I had never even talked to throughout, you know, in my high school. So it was fun. It was great.
I just also want to say, what Tim's not saying is, you know, the five students who sat up on that stage, now, they spoke to the junior class individually, then they spoke to the senior class, which was their exact peers. They fielded questions from their classmates, completely unscripted, and it really was student-driven. Although we had teachers up there, you know, like Mrs. Lodge and Mrs. Alvarez, it really was the students that answered the vast majority of questions. And it was heartfelt and it was wonderful. And Tim just did an incredible job organizing this, so I can't thank him enough.
I would also just say one more thing, that after that, after the both presentations, I know I have, and I know my colleagues have as well, had numerous conversations with kids we had never met before about situations they were concerned about. Just yesterday, two girls I'd never met before came, have, since yesterday and today, two girls that I'd never met before came and talked about serious relationship situations that they have found themselves in. And based on these assemblies, were really beginning to question whether or not they were in healthy relationships. So they, what, it really has started a really good conversation at the high school, I think, and hopefully it will continue in that direction.
Thank you. Actually, I'm just going to make a quick comment while walking out, but just to echo, I think, what you were saying, and I'm proud of the students for being able to take a situation and turn it around and go in a positive direction with it. You know, it's a reflection on the good things that are happening in the district. And I wondered, actually, if, because I'm guessing the people who presented the One Love people probably left that with an impression. I know there were two presentations, but then I wondered, was there a follow-up with them saying, you know what, hey, we're sorry about that, but here's what we were able to do, and it actually made us stronger because of it? And I think ultimately, the organization would appreciate that in the way, you know what, we did accomplish the goal after all. So I was just curious if...
They couldn't say enough good things. So could you just share what they said about Brewster High School?
You know, it was disruptive. You know, the second, the first day of the second assembly was disruptive. The first assembly went perfectly fine. You know, you could tell the presenter was embarrassed and a little thrown, but they were swarmed by students at the end of that assembly. Our students wrote apology letters, and they were heartfelt. We called, I called personally, you know, a bunch of teachers, you know, independently reached out.
And they want to come back? They want to, they want to talk. They want to facilitate the conversation. They are, have offered to have a group of kids if the kids want to be involved in, you know, forwarding the message even more. So they're, you know, they weren't as appalled as we were.
And we also spoke to them about the follow-ups. So after we had the assembly, I placed a call to the foundation and I talked about what the students actually got out of the assembly.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
There's also a video.
There's also a video of the second day's second assembly with students.
And the article in Barrett's, which is really good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, last one, we're almost there. K-12 Science Task Force, Ms. Michelle.
Thank you for this opportunity. We're very aware that we are the seventh of seven presentations. The good thing that Ms. Leonard is here, because he is not shy about telling you, you can move faster. So we will do our best to be concise, yet share some of the salient points that we have from our work with the Science Task Force. I'd like to introduce Mr. Rob Leonard, our high school liaison, Mrs. Danielle Sullivan, our high school's principal, Mr. Jim Flora, director of technology and innovation. And we also have two task force members in the audience, Mrs. O'Gorman and Mr. Wagner. So thank you both for your help and assistance with this. What, we thought we'd start with the members of the task force. It's one of the larger task forces that we have. And what you'll see is K-12 teacher administrator representation, as well as some district-wide administrators tonight. I did introduce you. And what I am particularly proud about with this particular task force is the parent and community member representation that we have. Because what we see is individuals bringing their professional expertise to the table and helping us make really good decisions. So we have science teachers, we had two college professors who were involved in program design at the college level, as well as serving on admission boards. We have a former board member and retired IDM-er. We have an individual who's a champion of robotics and STEM and actually helped bring our robotics program to the high school. So it's a really robust group that gave a lot of really great and passionate feedback about where they would like to see our science program go at K-12. This is the charge of the task force, which we started with and revisited throughout. We know that we served in advisory roles to you and to the superintendent to make recommendations about what we have learned from different areas of data that we have examined and really to put forward a philosophy about, okay, so now we have this representative group. What is it that we believe a really quality science program looks like? And then how can we operationalize that over the years to come? We've had five meetings so far, so far since December, starting with the big picture of some of the, you know, internal drivers, such as the SCP, but also the external picture, such as the change in New York State science norming standards, as well as some of the requirements that we have under ESA. On the 15th, we had our K-12 science liaison share what we currently offer, both in terms of our core content, as well as our electives. And we began to look at some data. I'll get into the data in a second. On the 23rd, we went through a self-assessment. What we kept doing throughout, which I think was really healthy, was asking questions about what do we need to know more about in order to make these recommendations? So we examined data at each of these, each of these sessions. And on the first, we started our initial recommendations, and then the fifth is where we finalize the recommendations for, that we are about to put forward to you. Here's an example of some of the data that we looked at. So you can see that some of this is typical assessment data, what do APM region scores look like? You know, it's like class sizes, and, you know, we mentioned before, what are those core versus elective offerings at K-12? But what we also got into, we got into some random detail about how many students are taking science for four years? I mean, you're taking for two and three years, and what are the characteristics of those students? And this actually jives really well with the work that we're dealing with, the High School 2023 Task Force, where we have said, what kind of student are we serving well at Brewster High School? And who are we sort of leaving behind? And what are some of the curricular instruction and assessment adjustments that we can make to do that? So this, these two groups informed one another as we, as we move through these processes. This is what our gap analysis looked like. We, on the left, on the column, I should say, we have the dimensions of New York State science learning standards. We thought it was important to frame this work around what we're going to be expected to do by, by New York State. So we had disciplinary core ideas, cross-cutting concepts in science and engineering practices. What we wanted to do at each of the grade bands was to give ourselves a rating to say, where are we, we're doing great, where are we, we're doing okay for now, but we want to make sure to monitor? And then where's this immediate area of need? And this was helpful in getting us to pinpoint, because we knew that we wanted to get to this point tonight, where we could make a recommendation to you that would impact the 2019, 2020 budget. And we came up with two immediate areas of focus for, for right now. So we're going to get a little bit into this, but we wanted to at least let you know a big picture of how we narrowed down and got to these, got to these recommendations. Mr. Leonard?
It should not that.
Okay, so do I need to lock on?
Did it lock you or no? It should just... Is the slide still there?
Okay, so in the history of Brewster High School, if I can just... Okay, so if you, this is the science, or science, social studies man in English departments over a 10-year period. If you focus on the blue column, okay, all the way to the left, that's the science department. At one point, we were at the staff of 14, and even if you kept that going to the left a little bit in the years just prior to that, there were still only 14 teachers, but we were teaching close to 16 full-time positions. So just follow that blue column all the way to the right, and you'll see it just keeps on getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And currently, we are at 9.8 science teachers for the department. All right, so analysis of the lab time, if you start on the right, 2018, 2019, apparently earth science has lab once out of four days. All the AP classes have lab every other day, so two out of the four. So all the other science classes do not have a lab, okay? The physics classes, the chemistry classes currently do not have a lab. Go to the left, and that's 2007, 2008, all of the classes were in a one out of four cycle. If we went back a couple of years prior to that, all the classes were two out of four, all the science classes are two out of four. And again, you'll see in the comparison of the number of courses that we're offering, obviously, it has been shrinking, okay? We have less staff to teach, so we have less offerings. And the one thing that's really not reflected here is if you look in 2018, 2019, you go down to the bottom, astrobiology and science research, we have one half a credit section of each. That is the only electives available. If you looked in 2007, 2008, we had a full section of zoology, a full section of science research, and multiple sections of forensics and biological issues.
So I had the opportunity to speak with a Brewster alumni, six years removed from graduating from Brewster. She is currently an environmental engineer at an international, with an international corporation. And speaking with her was one of the most dynamic conversations that I've experienced. And she really gave some helpful insights as to what's really needed. So I will just kind of touch on three real important, specific topics that she stated to me that was extremely important to have in a K-12 science experience. The first thing she stated was that she really felt that in K-12, there needs to be a real authentic laboratory experience. And what does that mean? We hear that word a lot. So when you're, when you're looking at an authentic laboratory experience, you're looking at observation, manipulation, experimentation with natural phenomenon, actually processing and research, learning how to collect data, analyze data, working with relevant tools and models. So that is, that was imperative. And she actually needed to, she was in an Ivy League school, and she needed to take specific remedial courses on laboratory techniques and get extra help regarding basic laboratory skills and techniques. And this is a student in environmental and an engineering major, taking multiple physics, chemistry, biology courses. So that was, that was her big statement to me, that that was imperative, that we needed here. The second piece of it included some of the skills within the authentic laboratory component, the opportunity to do research, to work with a team, to actually fail and try again. And that was, that was so important to have, because that's what she's experiencing, and that's what she stated, that, you know, you experience in any career that you, that you go into, the stamina piece and perseverance component. Then she also talked about the factor, or the component of technical writing, being able then to communicate effectively what your findings are, and that's part of an authentic laboratory experience. She also stated that it was extremely important to take and be literate in coding, percentage of computer science. Coding is becoming a general requirement, no matter which field a student may pursue. And it doesn't matter what language, if it's Java, Python, C++, once you learn one language, the other languages are, you're more apt to learn as well. So she did state that coding is becoming like an English 101 class in colleges and universities, and that was extremely important to have. So those were really the main, the main components that she said are extremely necessary to have as, you know, as a K-12 science experience here at Brewster. And then the last component she said was, it is so important to have exposure to diverse course offerings. And not just concentrated in one specific science, but to be able to take different science courses. She stated that chemistry really serves as a foundational course, and a lot of the concepts can be applied into different disciplines. So that was, there was, there was so much more, but I know, like Mrs. Gashnet said, this is the seventh of seven presentations, and I know there's more to come. So I wanted to make sure that I communicated the salient points.
A lot of this feedback was from one student. It was our valedictorian from the Ivy League school who now is in the field. So what we want to do is extrapolate from that, what does that mean for all of our students? And, you know, some of those key pieces and themes, I think you'll see in the recommendations that we make moving forward. I mentioned that one of the task force members was also a college professor on the admissions board. He shared with me that if he has two similar resumes of students or applications of students applying to school, and they have, let's say, they have similar scores, similar community service, and they can only take one, they're going to take the student with more lab experiences. That, he said, hands down, it's a no-brainer. That would absolutely be the decision, make the clincher for them in terms of making their decision.
Good evening. So we, as a science task force, have discussed how important it is to have students experience science. We, as teachers, really want to develop 21st century skills in our students, want to be empowered to be able to implement such hands-on inquiry-based pedagogy. And by adding more lab time back to our curriculum, that will, you know, allow us to do so. We went out to local schools. We had OCS survey 18 local, or we had a OCS survey regional schools regarding how they use lab time. 18 schools responded, and every school that responded said they did have additional time on top of the regular... time on top of the regularly allocated instructional time for labs. So we do for some of our courses currently, but we do not for physics, we do not for chemistry, and that's four of our 10th and 11th grade students. We don't have any additional lab time. My students right now in physics would not qualify to take the region's exam if they wanted to take the region's exam because they don't have enough lab hours already. So, you know, really, the importance of adding lab time back to our curriculum is really of critical importance. So what, what we'd like to do is we'd like to add, and again, we currently have lab time for earth science in the APs. We'd like to add lab time back to all courses for physics and chemistry, and we'd like to have that in every other day model which we had twelve years ago. So what's needed to do that, as we've discussed earlier in the night with the needs for the schools, is an earth science teacher, a physics teacher, and then a bilingual E&amp;L teacher. And these, of course, could be, you know, dual-certified individuals, and that would, you know, certainly make more amicable for, you know, teaching across content areas and then teaching other electives, but this is what we're hoping for as a science task force.
I'm going to steal one of Mr. Carlson's sayings, and I'm going to be the wet blanket here and say that staffing alone is not enough. The next step is to make sure that we are aligned in terms of our curricular assessment in these content areas. So what we would like to do, our second recommendation, is to make sure that teachers have similar curriculum maps for similar courses. If you're in a physics course, you should be assessed in the same way, and you should have the same curricular expectations. So we would ask that, we would ask for time for teachers to be able to do this, to develop the common assessments, develop these curriculum maps. And what comes with this is accountability and more administrative oversight in terms of here are the expectations, and you can have the professional license to get there, but it needs to be a collaborative experience that students, as they're taking these courses, their, their own experience does not vary based on the teacher that they happen to have. So in order to do this, what we are asking is for additional time, and this is what was included in the part of the curriculum budget. We are looking for, for planning time inside and outside of school, maybe summertime, depending on how, how this works. We would have to talk to the high school staff to make sure that teachers are available. And while we anticipated going well, there might be a need for outside consultation, I said the wrong word, consultants to come in. You know, we have, Mr. Barardo says, the meeting of the minds. You know, I think that we can get a lot of staff members to do this, but in some cases, to be honest, there are differing philosophies on how certain things should be taught and assessed, and we need to make sure that we have a common vision to move forward with that. And our final recommendation is just to continue to work. What we want to do for this particular year, to your point, Mrs. Seega, we want to make sure that this is not just, you know, this is not just the end. We actually have a meeting with the coordinator of the super program, the Syracuse University Project Advanced, to come in to talk about what other offerings we can, we can have across the board, not just for science, but we'll say, out of world language, social studies, English, and math, science is the only content area that did not have a course where you can earn college credit at the same time as high school credit without taking an AP exam. So we would, that would be an area of focus for us. One of the other survey items that we, we were able to obtain was about science research. I remember when I was a teacher at high school and assistant principal, we had a thriving science research program for a number of reasons that has changed over the years, but we need to revisit that question as a task force, what role does science research play? That just doesn't happen at a high school, that's a bigger picture. And then finally, this philosophy statement, going back to our charge, what makes for a quality K-12 and 612 science program. And then moving into next year, we might have to ask people if they want to rejoin because I don't think they knew this was a long-term thing. But what we want to do is look at programs beyond, beyond the high schools. We want to continue to expand our course offerings. We want to do a lot of the integration work that we have done with STEM and PES for All. And we currently, as you know, have all students that seek living environment in eighth grade at Wells, and we do really well in reading to them. And what we want to make sure that in the world of the New York State Science Learning Standards, that picture still fits in and jives. So maybe we, we offer another option in eighth grade in addition to that. So these are some questions that we want to wrestle with, and I'm sure, given this, given this group will come up with some other to-do items. So finally, what we're requesting, 2.0 science at the high school and the 1.0 T-Sol science, this will help with the mandates that are not fulfilled, and these were, these two items were included in the budget, as was the professional learning and planning time that was in the curriculum budget, and we just ask for support of, your support of our ongoing work.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions? No, good, thank you. Okay. So now we move on to our public remarks before our action items. You know, we all know the rules at this point, I think it's just, if you can come up to the podium, please, and state your name, and address the board, and you have two minutes, which Susan will monitor, and we'll move from there. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make on any of the action items this evening? If you could please come up, thank you.
My name is Scott Seaman. I just have a quick item. I want to, hopefully, we get the approval from Model U N trip. It's a great program, it's been offered to the kids before, they've just been down to Columbia. They excel down there, they do great, they learn real life skills. Hopefully, if we can get them down to DC, they'll do even better. Thank you to the science task force people, I'm not on topic, I just want to say I was here. And I did have one item in regards to the, I've noticed there's been two items now with accumulated sick time. I personally think it's great to be able to offer this, but I just have a question in regards to the financial aspect. If we're paying it out, and we're having a sub, or is it beneficial to us to do it in this fashion as opposed to a payout at retirement? Either way, they're do it, they're entitled to it, I just want to know from a financial aspect, how it would affect the school and for our planning purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comments there. Okay, so we move on to Victor, could you give a question for the Jackson item search?
Ms. Colligan, the question with regard to the use of accumulated sick time, do you want to speak to that?
Are we talking about a particular employee or?
The agenda item that Mr. Seaman referenced.
The actual number five? Yes, yes.
So this is, this employee has accumulated probably 250, close to 300 days, and there is a situation in her family, and she's asking if she could use some of her personal sick time for family sick time.
So financially, the employee, there's no cash value of these days at retirement?
Yeah. Okay, so we move on now to action item number one, approval of inter-municipal agreements. A, Katona-Louisboro Central School District regarding student transportation. B, Town Southeast regarding use of town athletic facilities.
Yes, these are our IMAs with various school districts and also the Town of Town Southeast, and I just want to, again, extend my sincere thanks and gratitude to the Town of Town of Southeast for accommodating our girls' softball team and boys' baseball team, for use of the town fields, Supervisor Haye and Levon Bradojin, Patty Borman, Kathy Chidina have been exceptionally helpful to us, and Mr. Barardo especially for coordinating this, so thank you to the Town of Southeast.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please. Carrie, and a second. Glenn, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven, that was one, none? Motion passes, seven zero. Number two, acceptance of donation, Baldwin Grand Piano for Wells Middle School.
Yes, I'd like to, again, thank Ms. Patty Taylor for reaching out to Mr. Lewis Crisanti, who is incredibly generous in donating this grand piano, which has a value of over $50,000 as a new piano, and slightly used, but certainly going to be useful for our students, an incredible, incredibly generous donation, so thank you.
That's right, thank you. All right, I need a motion for this item. Eric, and a second. Kristen, any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, okay. All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Number three, approval of MOAs with the BTA for A, strength and conditioning coach, B, girls' track modified coach and assistant coach, girls' lacrosse varsity coach, C, point five assistant to the director of physical education, health, and athletics. Ms. Colligan?
This, these are memorandum of agreements with the Brewster Teachers Association to add these titles to their contract with the agreement with the agreement stipends as stated in the MOAs.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please, for this item? Glenn, and a second. Kristen, any questions or comments?
So, so on personnel end, we're filling, we're creating positions and filling them now? Is that what's happening?
Yes, yes. The, my understanding from Mr. Barardo is the enrollment has increased in the girls' track, that's why he has a need for the modified assistant coach. The girls' lacrosse varsity coach has been in place, but it was never added to the contract. And the assistant to the director, we didn't plan on moving forward to fill that, as well as the strength and conditioning coaches.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Seven, I think, any opposed? No, so motion passes, seven zero. Number four, approval of staffing, two 1.0 full-time E&amp;L teachers at Brewster High School.
Sure. Several meetings ago, we, Mrs. Dakin and I showed an update regarding the ongoing concerns of our failure to meet our New York State mandates at the secondary level, really the middle school, 1.0 at the middle school and 2.0 at the high school. Mr. Hayes, we took your recommendation and advertised internally, we were able to fill that position, those positions at the middle school, but not at the high school. So we do need to advertise externally, so we put these forward for your approval.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, and a second? Eric and Diane, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Okay, now we move on to number five, approval of contract addendum for Ms. Bray.
This is to allow Ms. Bray to use 20 of her accumulated sick times to transfer that to family, to or use for family illness.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please, for this item. Kristen, and a second. Eric, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Number six, approval of disciplinary action for employee number 1931.
This is regarding employee 1931 to be placed on administrative leave, who has been placed on administrative leave pending a disciplinary investigation, was effective February 15th.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please. Carrie, and a second. Diane, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. We move on to number seven, approval of Brewster High School overnight field trips. A, Washington area Model United Nations Conference, March 21st through 24th, 2019, and B, Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute in Albany, March 9th through 11th, 2019.
Yes, thank you. We submit for your approval, two overnight trips. The first is what Mr. Seaman had mentioned, the Model U N traveling to Washington, this is their, one of their more, I guess, highly intended meets with 25 to 40 students attending. And the second is the Puerto Ricans Manning Youth Leadership Institute. This is a training program that students have gone through with Mrs. Dakin, and so Mrs. Dakin and Mrs. Danny Zeus are going to chaperone with your approval, four students to Albany to complete this program.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please. Glenn, and a second. Diane, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Number eight, approval of policy second read, 7560, notification of sex offenders.
Yes, thank you. We put this forward, we, the policy committee put forward this policy for your approval. It has been vetted by legal counsel and submitted for a second read.
Thank you. I need a motion, please. Kristen, and a second. Carrie, any questions or comments? Number four, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Okay, we now move on to the consent agenda. And, Ms. Colligan? Anything?
Actually, we want to, we want to recognize actually, this is Helena Nash Graham, who's our school business administrator, who's officially appointed, so welcome on board. Helena, who replaced Miss Denise Carrigan, so we'd like to congratulate her, and I'm very happy that you've chosen to work in our district. And the variety of other appointments largely associated with the continuation of clubs and other activities, ongoing hiring of substitutes, which we continue to do along with some leaves, not the ones on the trees, but leaves, leave replacements, and, let's see here, any retirements? Do you have any retirements on this agenda? It's probably unless I missed one.
No, I don't believe you do.
So that, that's the, that's the, some of the consent agenda for your, you and your local approval.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion and a second.
I have a question, there's something on the...
I don't think it makes a difference because I...
That's...
Does it matter? Because it's still the position that is...
Yes, and the action covers that. Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. So did I get a motion?
I have a motion.
Diane, my motion, and Carrie's my second?
Yes.
Great. Any other questions or comments? No, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. And, and here. And now we move on to remarks, fourth remarks, committee updates.
I guess I'll start. Last Thursday, it's on now. Okay, so last Thursday, we met at Senator Harkman's office, Dr. Henning and myself, in a packed room in Lakeland. It was, again, we, you know, discussed the foundation aid and all of our list of thoughts and wish lists. It was very nice to hear the senator actually listened, was taking notes. He knows... He knows things like a lot of the formulas aren't working. Probably by far, the greatest thing that came out of that meeting is that it wasn't just a one and done, hi, I just got newly elected, and, you know, yeah, I know you're here to talk about the budget and ask me for more money. He really wants to work with all the school districts, he wants to meet on a quarterly basis to follow up and figure out, how can we change things? How can, we've switched funding to where it needs to be? So that was great, and then of course, we invited him to our district, so we're working on getting him here, he's very interested, and, you know, we explained that he's right on the way, down from Albany, right past and right off at, you know, 84, and he was very excited, and he really wanted to, he wants to hear from the kids, and I thought that was admirable. So it was great, and it was just very nice to, you know, we got our points across, everybody went around the room, and it's not only our district, it's other districts, but he really did listen, and so that was it. So now I'm off.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Has anyone signed up for Thursday night's meeting assemblyman as a follow-up? I signed up, so I can go, but I just didn't know if anyone else was.
Oh, good, no, thank you.
Okay. I'll go.
Thank you, Kristen. I just wanted to follow up with something, because there's been so much talk about it, so clarity for me. The presentation that we did on the mental health and the packet that I said, I didn't even cover printout, I just bought it, this A P document that came from the state, they gave in there a sample policy, and I don't think we have a actual, like, mental health policy, we have other things, but they kind of gave a very specific policy that we can muddle after, and I have a sample one, I think this one came from Chappaqua, like how they've been starting to tweak it, and I don't know that we've been doing that work yet on a policy committee for the specific mental health language. I just, I'll give you this copy that I got from Chappaqua, and then they have theirs in there, but again, they started tweaking it. Another thing I was thinking is, because some of the language in here talks about, you know, the board's responsibility in helping with this initiative, and then I noticed they give you this self-evaluation in terms of, you know, how we're doing, so I know we've looked to bring people on board already and go in a direction, but the other thing is to kind of do this self-evaluation and see where we need to head, but the other big thing is a committee that has to be formed, is part of the requirement, and I thought, well, we already have a wellness committee, you know, we have a PBMS committee, it seems like there might be some merger with it between the two, you know, I'm not sure, but definitely it's the wellness, because that's already kind of a foundation there, just thoughts that I have it, and then maybe look at what the requirements are, if who else needs to be on that committee, maybe build on that, I don't know if we want a second committee or just build on the wellness one that we already have. But I just wanted to bring it up because I know that some of these things need to be in place by the next school year, and the committee is one of them, that that could be easy enough fix. And then, one of the first things they could do is go through these benchmarks, but then yes, for policy, a sale. That's it, that's it for me for now. Anyone else? No? Okay, so now we can open up the floor for public remarks. If anyone has anything they want to say at this time? Welcome, please, come up.
Good evening, my name is Janet Ballash, I have six children, their school system, and one I'd like to thank for her time. My 14-year-old daughter, who goes to Brewster High School, was suspended on January 13th.
Ma'am, I think.
And it's not about the suspension?
No, it's just, it's confidential matters, though, I think identifying even your daughter, I mean, I don't, if someone corrects me if I'm wrong, it is. You can, okay, if it's, thank you.
This is more about the teachers and the administrators. I've asked since January 4th to make sure that she has her studies, that she has packets, she has a private tutor at home, she's now going back on track. I cannot get her packets. She was given packets for science two days before the second semester ended. This child, she's a 90% top student, and she's not given the tools to keep going. And I'm asking for you to please ask them to help this child. She's a good girl, she's never been in trouble, she needs your help. I feel like you let her slip through the cracks, this is one child, she's slipping through the cracks. And I think, if we want our children to take responsibility, then teachers, administrators, board member, we have to take responsibility. We can't play role models to children if we don't set examples for them. And I feel bad that this child is a good girl, and she needs your help, and that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome, please. Whoever gets here first. Next person can just wait up front.
I'll wait up.
You'll wait up front.
Well, mine's kind of a follow-up. I'm along with other parents believe that when we send our children to school, that the people that are in charge, the teachers, the administration, have our children's best interest at heart. And what is happening to that family is disgraceful, and it makes me lose faith in what is actually going on. I don't believe that you guys are having our best interest at heart. I'm curious on what the checks and balances are, on where you figure out how you're going to punish or discipline people. I read the code of conduct since this happened, and it does state that you start with more lenient, and as a child, like, has more offenses, it goes on to something else and more serious. You went right forward with this child, and it's not fair. I mean, you have people calling in gun threats. What happened to that child? It's very concerning to me, and it saddens me, and it's really unfair. I don't feel comfortable talking in front of people, but I just really hope that you rethink, reevaluate, and fix this. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
In regards to the improvements we're looking to do for the science program, I know we talked a number of months ago about adding some type of STEM coordinator, I don't know if that was something that would be thought of or worked into it, or if that's something we do at a future date, I don't have a question for later. With the improvements for JFK, instead of taking the money out of fund dollars, is that something we could, if they find out, you know, putting out there $2 million to finalize what we've been doing at the schools, so that way it saves us taking the money at a one-time hit and stretching it out, but related to that, is that going to affect, you know, our capital exclusion or any of those items? That I'm not really sure about. It's good to hear we're following up on the high school bathrooms. I'm in the hospitality business of the consequence of bathrooms that aren't right, just doesn't seem right, my kids complain about it all the time, and all we need to do is just stop the jeweling in the bathrooms, and I think we're, would have accomplished that. And to follow up on the Disney update, the marching band, the band, the kids, the rock crew, everybody had a great time. I'd like to thank the administrators and everybody that went on the trip that participated, especially Ms. Pradico and the forming our school listeners for pushing it through. Hopefully it's something we can do again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Just on a more positive note, I just want to mention something that I witnessed that I probably will never forget for the rest of my life. Sixth graders now, okay, sixth grader was having a conflict, and before he went to anybody, I'm a little sixth grader, okay, I'm sitting there watching, I said, listen, active like a therapist, this is a sixth grader. I'm telling you the language he was using, what's your happy place? Resolve the problem, it never had a problem further. It was unbelievable, I'll never forget it, I just kind of mentioned that, these kids are awesome, they're just wonderful, and maybe we can hire her as a mentor.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Put my glasses away.
Okay, so, close the public comment, and, let's see, we're at, we have to do executive session. I need a motion, we have a few things to still discuss, we have some contact discussions to have, yep, and some disciplinary issues that we also go over. Need a motion for that? Carrie and Diane, all those in favor? Seven zero, motion passes, we're off to executive session. Thank you.